Call the meeting to order. Please stand, remove your hats. Salute the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and was duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Dr. Osmond?
Here.
Mr. Palmary?
Present.
Mr. Sargent?
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Walsh?
Approval of agenda. I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See no discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Barakas?
Yes.
Mr. Kat, Mrs. Cass, I'm sorry.
That's okay, yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmary?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go up there and do it up there, right? Teacher of the Year and Educator Service Professional of the Year recognition. Tonight, we have the pleasure celebrating this year's Teachers of the Years and Educational Service Professional of the Year. In honoring them, I didn't really want to use the word resilient, although our honorees certainly are. I also didn't want to focus on how well they have adapted over the course of the past two years, although they absolutely have done that too. Tonight, we are excited to focus on showing our sincere appreciation for the learning being done at our schools every day. Thanks to these amazing educators and their colleagues. Pandemic or no pandemic, there is a tremendous amount of content we are responsible for covering in 180 days. And our staff delivers, they push, they inspire, they model excellence day in and day out. They are truly spectacular. We are thrilled to be able to celebrate them for utter and complete dedication. They have to be making sure that students are growing academically, socially, and emotionally. This selfless dedication takes many forms. A creative lesson created by a teacher who needed to find a way to recapture her students' attention. A quiet moment to a student in a hallway from a teacher, coach, counselor, who noticed the kid needed a trusted adult to talk to. The tireless efforts of a school nurse who has been at the tip of the spear in navigating and responding to the unprecedented crisis. Or paraprofessionals, interventionists, therapists who have supported service will turn a student's struggle into success. Learning, growth, do not happen by accident. They are the direct result of professionals like the ones that we have here tonight, giving their hearts and souls to the students so they can thrive. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, it is truly our honor to recognize you tonight. When your name is called, please come forward escorted by the building principal to receive your recognition. Once you have received your items, please stand on the stage. Once we have all the educators announced for your level, we will take some photos and be able to share this moment with our community. From the Crawford Rodriguez Elementary School, teacher Carrie Janowski. From Elms Elementary School, teacher Shauna Brianna. From the Holman Elementary School, teacher Joanna Likes. And speech therapist Dana Dvorazowski. From Rosenhour Elementary School, teacher Cassandra Latrano. Those gotta make an entry. From Switlick Elementary, teacher Teresa Toddings. Now on to the middle schools. From Getz Middle School, teacher Mary Beth Hughes. From McCullough Middle School, teacher Jamie Hessenin. From Jackson Liberty High School, teacher Catherine Gibson. From Jackson Memorial High School, teacher Jason Diaz. Okay, now for the district awards. Each year, we also have a very difficult decision of selecting the District Teacher of the Year and the District Educational Service Professional. First, we will present the award for the District Educational Service Professional of the Year. This person has chosen. For this award is someone who is dedicated to both her students and her colleagues. She is a master of making connections with others and making every person, adult or child, feel like they are the most important person in the room. She is involved in her school's sunshine committee and is committed to creating a positive work environment at her school. She has a tremendous amount of skill and expertise in her area, but she is always willing and wanting to grow and is dedicated to being the best resource for the students she can be. She is always looking for ways to refine her skills and to find new and interesting ways to reach her students. This staff member has worn a few different hats in the district and spearheaded and manages her school's trout-in-the-classroom experience, which provides firsthand lessons on responsibility, commitment, and sustainability. And just like the trout she releases in the wild through the forestry center, she lovingly releases the students into the next educational adventure with the strong foundation of excellence she has modeled for them. For this reason, and for all that she does to support and inspire the students and staff at Elms Elementary School, we are proud to name the District Educational Service Professional of the Year from Elms Elementary School, media specialist Cheryl Knopkin. Necessary to get there. With more than 20 years' experience, this teacher is known for having a quick wit and mischievous, okay, sense of humor sometimes. Okay, these personality traits serve his person well in the classroom, allowing the teacher to connect deeply with the students and to actively seek out ways to reach every single child every year for the last 20 years. This teacher dedication to the craft goes beyond the traditional school into countless parent workshops given to strengthen the home-school connection. This is not something that is expected of this teacher, but something that he expects of himself. He embodies excellence, models dedication, and seeks out opportunities to challenge himself as a teacher. For example, he introduced a journal newsletter to the school-wide audience with great success. He is the epitome of what it means to go above and beyond for his students and his colleagues. For this reason, for all the ways he has mastered the art of teaching and inspiring our students, we are proud to honor, as the District Teacher of the Year, from Johnson As we are taking pictures, we're gonna take like a five, eight-minute recess.[1131.33]
At this time, if anybody would like to leave the meeting because you have to work tomorrow, okay, take advantage of it. Please have a seat or take this conversation out into the hallway. You finished?
Yeah, nice work!
You ready to go? At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Promelli for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year and the Ed Specialists of the Year as well. You are all truly amazing. You inspire students every day. You inspire me every day, and we thank you for all that you do for our students every single day. So, as tradition has it, we will begin with our High School Student Board representatives. And let's start with Dakota. I think I saw Dakota over here today. Dakota from Memorial. Thank you, Dakota.
Hello. Good evening, Mrs. Promelli, Board of Ed members and Central Administration staff, and thank you for having me back again. Before I begin, I'd like to congratulate the Teacher of the Year from Memorial, Mr. Jason Diaz, and our Support Staff Professional of the Year, Ms. Michelle Sheeran. I've heard nothing but good things about these two outstanding members of the school staff. So, that in mind, congratulations, and thank you for all the great work both of you do for our students. I'm proud to say that we've seen a great month at Jackson Memorial High School. The school is vibrant, and despite it being the middle of the year, there's a general atmosphere of vigor, and our students seem more than able of making even more progress on the tremendous growth they've had this year. Whether it be the appearance of Nioki, an adorable therapy dog that came to the school just a few days ago, the Valentine's Day Spirit Week, or the incoming lifting of the mask mandate, we have found many reasons to celebrate this month. One of the larger things we will celebrate is the school musical, Big Fish, which opens next month and will be performed from March 11th through the 13th. The cast and crew will doubtlessly live up to the high bar they've set for themselves, and so I invite you all to see it if you can. In club news, our business organizations are welcoming the state competition season with open arms, as 22-decade competitors will go to Atlantic City from February 28th through March 3rd, and the FBLA will hold their state competition, also in Atlantic City, from March 9th through 11th, sending 10 students. We have high hopes for both teams and wish them both the best of luck. Our members of Model Congress will go to Rider University on the 25th to present their bills and organize party structures ahead of future meetings. As of right now, Memorial is a senior member in each of the three main parties, including myself as leader of the independents, Ryan Cass is a whip for the Republican Party, and Philip Williams is a whip for the Democratic Party. Additionally, our chess team has had a strong year despite limitations posed by COVID. It has made several births, I've just been told four births, and a larger tournament after the season spent on the Lee Chess online portal. We wish them much luck as well. Lastly, for our clubs, our ski club will be undertaking an overnight trip to Vermont in the first week of March, a welcome return to normal by its members, who may add seem to be the only people I know who get thrilled anytime the weather dips beneath 20 degrees. Our sports teams have continued a spectacular winter season, as the girls' wrestling team continues to hold on to its first in the state ranking, with multiple competitors still on the hunt for state championships. The girls' basketball team has also been on a tear and prepares to take on Tom's River North tomorrow in the second round of the state tournament. The boys' team has also advanced to the second round and will battle it out against Holmdel tomorrow with hopes of advancing to the next round. The boys' bowling team has just won the short conference after putting together a remarkable run as the three seed, just earlier today beating first-ranked Brick Memorial to claim a title, while the girls won the Group Four Championship and came within a win of being overall champions. The cheer team placed seventh nationally in the annual Orlando competition. So, as you can see, we've had a great season, which has not only produced championship results, but also laid the groundwork for continued success. It's hard to see how we could be any more proud of our athletes and all they've accomplished. Thank you again, Board members and Mrs. Promelli, for allowing me to address you. I hope that the next month will be just as successful as the past month has undoubtedly been, and I'll be back here at the next meeting to brief you all again. Have a good night.
Thank you, Dakota, for the informative report, and it was nice to see you the other day at the Student Council lunch, too. Okay, from Liberty, we have Brooklyn.
Thank you, Superintendent Promelli, Board of Ed members and guests. I'd like to start off by congratulating all of the teachers and educators of the year. February has been a great month for Liberty so far. Tomorrow marks one week until opening night for the At-Lib players' performance of The Little Mermaid. The cast, crew, and advisors have been working hard since December, and they are all very excited to show off what they've been rehearsing. Not only have the high schoolers been hard at work, but we also have our fifth graders from Crawford that have been practicing with the company as well. They will be featured throughout the show and are thrilled to show off their talents. So be sure to come support on the 24th and 25th at 7:00 p.m. and the 26th at 1:00 and 7:00 p.m. Speaking of exciting news, I am proud to announce that over the weekend, our very own Maya Rosario placed fifth in the South Division Wrestling Tournament after already placing second in her weight class at the Girls' Individual Shore Conference Tournament. This is the first year Liberty has a girls' wrestling team, and it's great to see the team succeed. The track team continue to do well by earning medals, but a special shout-out goes to Karavashi on being honored at the New Jersey Association for Intercollegiate Athletics for Women, Female Athlete Honoree for JLHS. The boys' basketball team is keeping up their winning record of 13-8, and the ice hockey team drew a big crowd for their senior night last week. The cheerleading team took first place at their Impact Cheer Challenge, and the dance team won first overall for both contemporary and hip-hop categories at their Starbound Competition. We know all the teams will continue to work hard as they finish their season strong, and we wish them the best of luck. This week, the Nations Among Nations, which is our school's diversity club, and Ro Kappa, our social studies honor society, are joining forces and hosting a movie night in the lecture hall. They will be showing Remember the Titan, and will have a discussion about the social injustice and racism present in the film. Recognizing bias is the first step in stopping it. We want everyone to feel loved and seen, so this week, we are celebrating our Valentine's Spirit Week. This helps students and staff come together to show off their school spirit while having fun. So, as you can see, February has been a great month overall for everyone at Liberty. Thank you for caring about what's happening in our schools. We look forward to keeping the positivity going and reporting back to you all next month with more great updates.
Thank you, Brooklyn, for the very informative report. A lot of things happening in our high schools. I'm looking forward to seeing The Little Mermaid next week as well. I always enjoy the plays. I did want to mention to the board and to the public that I had the opportunity over the last few weeks to meet with student leadership at both middle schools and both high schools. It was a sheer pleasure to hear about our student leaderships in those buildings and things that they have done this school year to help with engagement, to help with our spirit, our school spirits, and the plans that they have upcoming. They are true leaders in their buildings, and it was an absolute pleasure and highlight of my year meeting with them, and I look forward to meeting with you again soon. Moving on to some other topics tonight, as everyone knows, at this point, the Executive Order 251 is set to expire on March 7th. The district announced that on that day, March 7th, masks will be optional here in the district. Keep in mind that keep in mind that masking is a personal choice and that the district will expect the school community to respect each other's choices. I was at a superintendent's meeting this week for Ocean County, and we learned that as of now, the federal mandate for students to wear masks on the buses is still in place. We did ask for better guidance on this, and we also asked for updated health guidelines based on the decreased COVID cases that we see here in New Jersey, particularly in Ocean County and particularly in our school district. We were told both are being looked into and that new health guidelines are expected very soon. In looking at our Jackson data, our dashboard shows a drastic decrease in the number of positive cases and quarantines in our district. Yesterday, we had two positive cases and 44 staff and students combined across the district on quarantine, significant drop, and it had been dropping for weeks now. That's our lowest number moving forward so far. So, looking at that data and reviewing our data, it indicates that when we looked at our data and crunched it a little bit, the people who are identified as close contacts in our school show very little positive rates for actually getting COVID. Less than 1% of students are contracting COVID. We are strongly considering moving forward and identifying any student who is asymptomatic as a close contact, considering allowing them to stay in school. We will continue to contact trace, of course, but anybody who's asymptomatic, we will be moving forward and looking at them remaining in school as long as they are asymptomatic. Again, our goal is to have students in school. This would only apply to our close contacts identified in school. On the opposite end of that, when we look at our students who are close contacts for household contacts, the correlation to contracting COVID is much higher. So we will continue to keep those guidelines in place. As we receive guidelines, we'll also, as always, keep our community informed. I do want to talk about our last January Board of Education meeting. I wasn't able to respond at the last meeting to some of the comments and the questions that the public asked. I did ask at that meeting that anyone who did not get a question answered to reach out to my office. I do appreciate that many of the parents did reach out to me, and I did provide them answers to their questions. I do continue to encourage parents with concerns to reach out to their child's teacher, school administrator, and then if need be, obviously, my office. I again respectfully request that we show respect from one another in our comments, and I understand that we may not always agree, but we can be respectful in our discussion and our disagreement. There are just a few items that I feel that I need to follow up on from that January meeting, as I didn't get the opportunity. It was mentioned in the last meeting that we were requiring parents to purchase water for their children to bring to school, and that we shut down our water fountains. It is not the case. Yes, our water fountains were shut due to COVID, but we have multiple built-in water filling stations that we have put into our schools over the years. Students at all times are permitted water and can refill their individual water bottles throughout the day. In fact, when I'm in the buildings, I see the students with these refillable water bottles on their desks all the time. The district was painted as holding water back from students and requiring parents to purchase water for their children. That is not the case. Additionally, I would like to address clearly that the ARP, American Rescue Plan money, provided to the district is for the purpose of addressing COVID in the areas of the schools remaining open safely, being able to follow cleaning protocols, and for the purpose of addressing learning that is needed based from the pandemic. The ARP application that the district is required to complete does ask us questions in regards to what are we doing about masking, what information are we putting out about COVID and vaccine opportunities to parents, and we have done that. We have provided information. There is no requirement that these things must be done, with the exception of the Executive Order for masking at this time. We have been very transparent in regards to this money. You will see even more information tonight as we talk about our budget moving forward for next year in regards to this money. For further information, you can also go to our website, in which we posted the questions that were asked in the application and our responses as well. We also had done a prior presentation about the plan of that money, and that is also posted on our district website. So please feel free to go there for more information, and as things evolve, we will continue to post that. Finally, I wanted to address from the January meeting, the last meeting in which it was also presented by a community member, that the district is withholding information in regards to a HIB investigation and an open public records request known as OPR. I wanted to be clear again that this district did not do a HIB investigation against me or the Board of Education for following the executive order for requiring masks in school. Following an executive order does not warrant an investigation for HIB. There was no investigation done, therefore, there was no paperwork to provide. The District Board of Education and myself are not purposely withholding any information. We have been working hard to balance this pandemic, everything that has brought to these schools, and it has brought a lot. Endless hours of commitment here by every staff member, administrator, Board of Education. We've invested a lot of time to help keep this district moving forward during a pandemic. This district cares about students and has stellar programs. I understand that the last two years have been difficult, and I also understand that some people would like to see less government overreach in our schools. Those concerns need to be brought to the governor's office. I have said from the onset of taking the seat that I do respect everyone's opinions, and I understand people's frustrations, but it seems in some cases the reverse is not always true. I would hope that moving forward, we can agree that we should be working together for the benefit of our students and this community. Going to turn my attention to some other things now. Yesterday was SRO, Student Resource Officer Recognition Day. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge our two SRO officers who are actually here this evening, Officer Manofra and Officer Bajowski. Can you just give a wave? We are so very fortunate to have both of you working with us in our schools. We appreciate all you do to assist our schools on a daily basis. You are embedded in the culture and are always there to ensure our students, staff, and community feel connected and safe. Jackson truly has the best SRO officers, and I mean that. It is an absolute pleasure working with both of you, and thank you for everything you do. As usual, there are retirements to approve on tonight's agenda. Over the last year and a half, many educators have chosen to retire. We're losing some great expertise in this district for these retirements. We continue to see this occurring. The knowledge and depth of experience is a loss for sure. I do always wish the very best to everyone, all of the staff that choose to retire, and thank them for the positive impact they have had on the education of Jackson students. They've invested their careers in Jackson students. Tonight, I know she doesn't want me to do this, but tonight, I do want to point out an upcoming retirement of Mrs. Kathy McKeonan from Switlick Elementary School. A very longtime Jackson educator, Ms. McKeonan has continued, has and continues to have great impact on the students, staff, and families in Jackson. Mrs. McKeonan has dedicated 25 years to the students of Jackson. Her energy and enthusiasm never ceases to amaze me, and her drive to continue to improve student achievement is phenomenal. Mrs. McKeonan, I thank you for all you do and will continue to do for the remainder of the school year. It is an absolute pleasure working with you, and you will absolutely be missed. Okay, turn of subjects tonight. Also tonight, we begin our budget presentations to the board and to the public. It's a process that we do every year. We share information about proposed budgets that the departments are making. It does not include personnel. It includes everything else but the personnel piece of these departments. Tonight, these are our hopes to move forward with these budgets in our budget process. However, the district is still facing an S2 $4.1 million cut in our state aid for the '22-'23 budget. We have not heard any updates to that, although I have seen articles that they are going to be reviewing the funding formula. I have not heard of any changes to our state aid. In fact, the date of our governor's announcement has been pushed back to March 8th, so now we will not even hear our state numbers until after that. So, tonight, you will hear some of our presentations and some of our planning for our budgets, and you will also see how the grant money that we have received is helping this district moving forwards, particularly with our cuts, and how it's enhancing some of the work that we're doing here in the district. So, with that, we're going to begin our presentations tonight, and I call Mr. Ratante, Assistant Superintendent to Curriculum Instruction, to begin with our curriculum budget.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Promelli. Just good evening. Welcome to everyone. Appreciate you coming out tonight and listening to our budget presentations.
Rob, Rob, excuse me for a second. There was a problem with our primary feed to JTV. If you're interested in seeing the meeting, go to our district website for a fresh feed there. You'll see that. Sorry for the interruption.
I was hoping nobody would watch as I presented, but I guess. Now you just told everybody to watch me. So we're going to begin with, obviously, our curriculum instruction budget. The most important thing that we do as a district is teach children. Our curriculum instruction budget covers all aspects of what we do in the district. Allison, I don't think this is going to reach from here. Nope, I'm good. We're working. We're good. All right. Technic G number two is now resolved, so hopefully there won't be a third. Technique number two is now resolved, so hopefully there won't be a third. So this slide here really represents the core of what we do in instruction. We have a five-year plan that maps out really all of the curriculum instruction that we do. Each year, we have a review of a certain area of curriculum, and the following year is our implementation. Currently, right now, we're implementing our world language curriculum and also our health and phys ed. In world language, the bulk of that implementation has been on materials and supplies, specifically on the secondary and high school level. And our health and phys ed implementation is really a revamp of how we're teaching physical education, specifically in our high school, providing activities and athletic events and athletic sports that kids are much more interested in rather than everybody competing in everything and everybody participating in all activities. So that's where we are implementing for this year. Our review for right now is in our math, K-5, art and music, as well as our science, and that will be implemented next year, which is a significant amount of our budget that I'll get to in an upcoming slide. Overall, in addition to these curriculum areas, the district, the curriculum instruction budget covers all of our district health supplies, all of our adoption materials, curriculum writing, testing supplies, salaries for different academic programs that we run, online services that we purchase, our academy and our enrichment programs, and many of our before and after school programs. This slide here shows our building-based supply for all schools. This account is really just, this is a formula. It's based on the amount of students in each school, is given a certain dollar amount per each student. Additional money is given to schools and to students based on if they may be special education students or speech students. So you can see, obviously, some of our larger schools will have larger amounts, the smaller schools will have smaller amounts as it's based on per pupil enrollment. The key highlight of this slide is we have took the entire amount of this account and moved it out of our district funds, and we're using our ARP funds to pay for, for these supplies, not only this year, but also in the 2324 school budget as well. So that's a significant amount of money freed up out of our district budget, which will really help us account for the severe budget cuts that we have due to S2, where the ARP money will significantly help us sustain our programs in the district. That total number that you see there, 1,432,000, what that represents is all the items purchased within the schools: paper, school supplies, markers, chalk, desks, tables, anything like that, any of your day-to-day school purchases that's worked out. And what it works out to is about a dollar per day per student, that amount for the school year. The other core components of our curriculum instruction budget is our purchase services, advanced placement in academies, district health supplies, and general teaching materials. And you can see a significant amount of our purchased services are also going to be used from our ARP funds for the upcoming school year. Those are items like our Apex accounts, our student database Linkit, iXL programs that we use, a multitude of technology programs that we use on a day-to-day basis throughout the district. This is where, on the first slide where I mentioned our upcoming math and science adoptions is the most significant part of our curriculum instruction budget. The elementary adoption for math is a six-year adoption that provides student textbooks, as well as the most important research was this online access for all students, whether they're at home or whether they're in school, as well as teachers from home and school, to have access to all of our math content, which not only includes instruction material, but also remediation, enrichment, support, extra help, whatever may be needed that's provided online in addition to the math series. It is a significant amount of money, but it's also for six years, which provides licenses for every child in the district for all six years while we have the math adoption. Science is a similar situation, whereas on our secondary levels, middle school and high school, the science adoptions come with textbooks as well as online access, which in today's day and age is so important that all of our students have access to the materials online in addition to having textbooks. This slide shows a lot of our additional programs. You can see from this slide, again, we were able to use the bulk of our ARP funds to provide our summer programs for the upcoming school year, 124,000 being designated to before and after-school programs on all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and also a significant amount in staff professional development as we replace many of our retirees with newer teachers, and the importance of our professional development to have all staff be in our Jackson high expectation standards. What you can see, the total budget increases here is 486,000. A couple of things I just want to point out. That first slide that I showed that had the 1.4 million for school supplies, that's not included in that increase because we were able to use some of our ARP money for that in this current school year. The other thing that's not reflected in this increase is our preschool grant that we obtained. The majority of the preschool grant is a significant amount of money that goes to our staffing of teachers and aides in all of our preschool classrooms in order to provide additional classrooms, to provide free preschool for our Jackson community. That money is really mainly based on personnel, and it will be reflected in our personnel slides and personnel budget when you see that. The overall increase, though, in, from the district funds is an increase of $486,000 due to two reasons. Number one, we were at about 20% to 30% of what we needed to be last year, and we intentionally moved some of our higher-priced items to this year. But the key part of that increase is how much money was taken out of this budget in other areas that is offset through ARP that will help the overall budget as a whole. Next presentation I have is on our district guidance department. Our district guidance department represents our guidance that takes place in all 10 of our schools, our guidance counselors at every elementary school, as well as multiple counselors in our middle school and high school. The district guidance program, you can see, includes our student Naviance program, which all students have access to that helps them throughout their secondary school experience, PSAT that we provide for all of our sophomores and juniors, counselors that work in addition to the school year, including summer hours to welcome in new students, as well as any scheduled changes and counseling that needs to be done throughout the summer, assemblies, supplies, a lot of our orientations, our homebound instruction that we provide as needed for students, and many of our electronic documentation that needs to be kept for all students. You can see from this budget here as well, a good portion of this budget was also moved into our ARP and our grant funding. A key piece of that is outside student counseling spaces that are able to be provided through our ARP funding, in addition to the areas that you see up here that cover the items on that first slide. This total amount for the guidance budget really remains unchanged from the current school year that we're in. This is a flat budget moving into the next school year. And the final presentation I'm going to do tonight is our special education budget. And again, our special education budget covers our special education programs that are in every school, elementary, middle, and high school level, covers all of our, not only just our staff, obviously, but our programs that we're able to run in all of those levels. A key component of this budget is our out-of-district tuition that I'll talk about in a minute, our nursing costs for students, related services that they provide to students such as speech, occupational and physical therapy, supplies, equipment, testing supplies, and a lot of materials needed by our child study teams. So the most significant piece that will jump out at this slide here is our out-of-district tuition, $6.985 million. This number is a $1.2 million reduction from the current 2122 school year. This is a huge testament and a tribute to our staff. We're working with many, many students that typically would have gone to an out-of-district program, but under the direction of Dr. Taylor, our child study teams, and our fantastic teachers, we've created programs in district that can provide the services for these students, and many students where they might have needed to go out of district before are able to remain in our program in Jackson and be with, you know, be in our community. Very proud of the fact that we're able to bring that number down and bring many of our students back to our school district. Other items that you can see here, purchase professional services, as I mentioned, things like nursing and occupational, physical therapy, speech services. And another significant item on here is our ESY program, which provides special ed services for our special needs students throughout the summer months. Overall, this total budget is a reduction of $712,809 from this current school year. The most significant portion for that reduction is in our out-of-district tuition, which has provided us additional money that can be put back into supplies, programs that remain in district, and staffing, things, and staffing that is needed throughout the district. Another key component of our special ed and a key part of bringing our special needs students back in district is the professional development as well, which was also included in this budget. Okay, that concludes my three slides. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Baginski. Do you want to do questions? We'll do questions on each one? Yes. All right. We'll do questions first on my three. Any questions from the board at this point? Okay. Thank you very much.
So I would like to begin tonight by thanking all of our coaches and co-curricular advisors for being the connection for so many of our students in what has been a challenging year. Starting with athletics, this budget represents projected funding for high school athletics. The middle school athletics program is funded through the school budgets which Mr. Ratante just presented. This budget was collaboratively constructed under the direction of our two athletic supervisors, Mr. Panic U here at Jackson Memorial High School and Mr. McLean at Jackson Liberty High School. Together, they've constructed this budget, and it includes some of the following costs: the facilities rentals for our pool, for our swimming teams, ice hockey for ice time, the bowling lanes for our bowling teams, and our golf team that plays at a number of different local courses. It also includes police support for large events when we have them, as well as scheduling software, sports-specific equipment, and also team uniforms, which are on a replacement cycle. And this year, we happen to be, one of the big-ticket items is the football uniforms at Jackson Liberty High School. It also includes weight room equipment, and then our fees, our fees to be part of the NJASI AA and short conference, and then what makes up the largest portion of the budget, which is our officials and tournament fees, which we repay to have all of our games. So when you look at the numbers, a closer look at this combined budget, and these numbers represent the combined budget between both high schools, you'll see there is a slight increase this year largely due to vendor price increases. Everything that we, that used to buy costs more. And also, the replacement cycle does include some more expensive items this year, like I said before, with regard to the Liberty uniforms for football. It is notable that last year, this budget was cut by $20,000 during the budget process. So when you look at the increase, it really is, you know, that should be taken into consideration as well. With regard to co-curriculars, this is a display of all of our paid co-curricular positions in the school district. And these positions encompass a wide range of stipend, and these are annual stipends, a wide range of activities that include our award-winning marching band program. It includes curriculum clubs. It includes philanthropic organizations, service organizations like Key Club, Builders Club. It also includes various different support roles, like our school nurse coordinator, also our district printing coordinator. And so these stipends are contractually obligated through the Jackson Education Association contract. And so when you break it out by elementary, middle, and high school, the expenditures in total is slightly less than what we spent last year. And that's because there are slight fluctuations depending on the years of experience that a staff member might have in a stipend. So what is not in the budget, and is definitely notable, and really is a testament to the teaching staff here in the Jackson School District, is the 132 board-approved volunteer club advisors that we have. And they service, and I just listed them, and I apologize for the font size being so small, but I wanted you to see all of them on one page. These are all the volunteer clubs that we have at our different schools, and they range from the elementary all the way up through high school. And these are largely based on student interests. Students seek out a willing volunteer advisor that is on staff, and they have a volunteer club. And these clubs are board-approved, and it is really a testament to our staff for making these opportunities happen for our students. So the next portion that I'm going to present is the technology budget. And I'd like to acknowledge the work of Lincoln Mahabir, our supervisor of technology. His staff and himself have once again put together a budget that is prudent and complex. And taking a look at what this budget includes, this budget is a maintenance budget. It supports the maintenance of all of our technological infrastructure and all of our devices in the school district. So it's important to note that the pandemic has continued to push our use of technology deeper and deeper and deeper, and we've become more and more dependent on technology, not to mention the safety that goes along with that. So when you look here at what this budget includes, it includes some of the key programs that we use to operate the school district. Edgemet, our financial software, Genesis, our student information system, how we communicate with via our website, Blackboard, Trip Tracker, School Dude, which is our maintenance system. So all of these are extremely important for operating the school district in an efficient manner. It also, this budget also includes the replacement of the oldest servers and switches. These constantly need to be upgraded as they run to their end of life. It includes the district network management. We have a very large server farm, and this gets managed through a district network support service. This also includes the replacement and maintenance of our printer fleet, also the broken tech equipment, mostly devices. It involves a small expenditure for training for technicians, and then a pretty significant expenditure for email and network security software, as well as the district-wide internet service, which is our, the way all of our, that powers all of our internet in the school district. And this year, it also includes a pretty significant JTV bus equipment upgrade. And if you've never seen the JTV bus, you should take a peek inside there. It rivals a large network studio inside there, and it is, it is some very expensive equipment in there, and they are due for an upgrade. So when you look at the numbers, the lion's share here is in that purchase professional services. None of these line items for next year, with the exception of the lease purchase, are paid for out of the grant. But I will tell you that this department is not, was not, like they were not funded by grants. We, in fact, utilized the S2 funding to finance a large portion of devices, including the lease purchase, which you see the lease purchase payment here of $510,000. That allowed us to replace all of the Chromebooks in the school district. 7,000 Chromebooks at a cost of over $2 million were funded through that lease purchase, and you see that lease purchase payment there. Also, the S2 funds enabled us to spend quite a bit of money on upgrading other equipment that needed to be upgraded. What is also not on here is the security grant that we earned several years ago, and we're finally doing the work on, which includes the replacement of all of our intercom systems in all 10 schools. A huge upgrade paid for out of the security grant, which is a project that's over $400,000. So when you look at the increase here, yes, it's an increase of $538,000, but also keep in mind that this budget specifically during the S2 crisis last year was cut by $478,000. The last grant, as I mentioned, all those, and we still haven't received the funding for this, but we've received the commitment, is the Emergency Connectivity Fund grant. And this is a grant that will bring $2.3 million worth of devices into the school district. This includes finishing out the replacements of the Chromebooks, also numerous laptops and teacher laptops. There's some very exciting things here, to start an esports program that is slated for next year. And so this is also another piece of the puzzle here, grant funds for the technology So the last section I'm going to speak to tonight is security. And the security budget is largely a personnel-driven budget, but I'm going to share some of the expenditures that are non-personnel. And I really just want to acknowledge the work of Ray Maluski, our director of security, who's in the building tonight. Ray does an incredible job keeping all of our students and staff members safe, and he does it in a very frugal manner. Looking at the expenditures in this department... Looking at the expenditures in this department, these expenditures largely are from the replacement of end-of-life security cameras and also additional security cameras. We have a very large network of security cameras, and they're very expensive to maintain, but they're extremely important. This also includes the uniform replacements for our security staff, as well as, the security department is responsible for the replacement of all ID badges for students and staff. And so they manage that, and this also includes funding for those supplies. So when you look at the expenditures here, the expenditures totaled to $125,493, none of which are funded through grants. It is a $20,000 increase from last year, and this is largely due to the camera replacement costs. As I mentioned before, with vendor price increases, the cost of cameras has also increased. We use a prioritized list that we create every spring. The school administrators with securities walk the buildings, identify what are the priorities, and from that school security site assessment, we develop a prioritized list. And there are quite a few still areas that we still want to have some camera coverage, so. And that is the operations budget. And so in closing, before I take any questions, I just want to really emphasize we try to be as efficient as possible. The operations end of the school district is not always what is front and center and what is seen, but it is absolutely essential to the operations of this school district, and I think essential to student learning. So are there any questions from the board? Okay. I believe I'm going to introduce Mr. Bruno, our Director of Buildings, Buildings and Grounds.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Ms. Primili, Board Administrator, Michelle Richardson. My name is Anthony Bruno, and I'm here tonight to present to you the Buildings and Grounds Budget for 2022 and 2023. And this slide here, this is some areas that I oversee in our district. Supplies and expenses to maintain the buildings, energy, capital projects, supplies and equipment to clean and sanitize, snow removal, sports field maintenance, energy efficiency programs. Moving on. In this slide here, these are the proposed costs that we're going to be presenting for this year. We have cleaning, repairs, and maintenance services, general supplies, miscellaneous expenditures, non-structural equipment, purchasing professional and technical services, energy, sewer and water, state-required SEC bonds, and capital improvements. The comparison to the previous year, the total budget is increasing by $2,158,062. All services, supplies, and expenditures have increased due to inflation, rise of material and labor cost. Non-structural equipment includes general furniture upgrades, as well as items like tractors, pullable trailers needed for upkeep of the grounds. Energy, sewage, and water have increased by 1.5% in order to adjust to inflation, and this is in accordance with the ESIP law. Some of the capital improvement projects include Jackson Memorial High School Clayton electrical upgrades, Jackson Liberty High School resurface of the running track, and GETS replacement of fire alarm and water tanks, and among others. Moving on to our next slide is our district energy initiatives. We view an implementation of our district-wide energy plan on our annual basis. In order to lower our operating costs, we close five schools for the summer, and the remainder of the district is closed on Fridays. Participation in Demand Response Program will generate approximately $72,000 in revenue this year. Constant monitoring of the third-party suppliers to secure the lowest cost for electricity and natural gas. Continuing, the pending completion of our district-wide 27 million ESIP Energy Savings Improvement Project. Funded by energy savings, this includes over four megawatts of solar installation throughout the district. Reduction of our carbon footprint by replacing outdated equipment. This includes LED lighting, high-efficiency boilers, improved building insulation, plug-load controls, and many more. Our energy education specialist position has increased energy savings through aggressive energy auditing, monitoring, education, strategic planning, HVAC scheduling, and the ESIP program participation. In our Sustainable Jersey for Schools program, seven schools are bronze certified. Elms, Swillic, and Jackson Liberty are silver certified. We have received 18 grants as a result of our participation in this program. Swillic Elementary is a national-recognized as a green ribbon school by the New Jersey Department of Education in conjunction with the New Jersey DEP and the Audubon Society. Jackson School District earned New Jersey DEP grant to buy two electric garbage trucks. But unfortunately, due to manufacturing delays, we are still awaiting production of these vehicles to begin. In the next slides, this will be our Tier One capital projects proposed in this budget. In our Transportation Department, on the Memorial side, the sectional asphalt paving and repairs. Elms Elementary School asphalt repairs to fill cracks. Holman Elementary, stage floor repair, vinyl side for our modulators. Johnson Elementary School vinyl side for the modular, asphalt paving path to Camp Joy. Swillic Elementary School vinyl side to modulators. GETS Middle School, the art rooms 502 and 503, replace countertops and sinks. Replace the fire alarm, vinyl side for a modular, and replace the water storage tanks. McCullough Elementary School, repair, rebuild, repaint the handicap parking spaces. Vinyl side, one modular. Jackson Liberty High School, re-stripe the running track. Refinish gym floors, stripe graphics, the main gym and the auxiliary gym. Jackson Memorial High School, handball court and wall repair. Renovate Memorial locker rooms. This will be a multi-year project. The fieldhouse renovations, this is also going to be a multi-year project. Roof repair in multi-areas, asphalt paving of the remaining areas of the roadway, new fencing for the tennis courts, resurface the running track at the stadium, Clayton electrical upgrade for our switchgear. And moving on with the next slides as we go forward, this will be some pictures that I've taken of some of the areas of concern that are part of my budget. This is Elms Elementary School parking lot. As you can see, we have some cracks here that is a safety hazard for children, staff, and teachers walking through the parking lot. This here is a picture of Memorial High School. This is the asphalt paving of the student entrance off of Don Connor Boulevard. And as I said prior, residing on modulators. The one to the right is a completed modular, and the one to the left is not a completed modular. This is the Jackson Memorial Fieldhouse. As I said, this will be a multi-year project. Jackson Memorial Fieldhouse, this is part of the multi-year project. Renovate Memorial and Clayton locker rooms. Jackson Memorial High School, this is the Clayton switchgear. This is Crawford Rodriguez. This is our rooftop chiller cooling tower. GETS, this is the boiler room. This is the water storage tanks replacement. And last, which I'm sure everybody's going to be excited about, I just got confirmation today that we are scheduled to start to resurfacing and redoing over the Memorial tennis courts. That should be starting on May 1st. Weather permitting. And going ahead, our goals, invest in our infrastructure, improvements to maintain building integrity, maximize dollars by incorporating energy savings, to keep the physical plant grounds safe, accessible, and healthy for students, staff, and visitors. And with that, if there's any questions from the board?
Question?
Yes.
With the modulators, does that include HVC system replacement?
No, that, with the modulators, we're just doing the outside facade of the siding.
Another question.
Okay.
Okay. How is your truck fleet? I looked at the garbage truck, and you don't have replacement for that yet, but what about all the other vehicles? Is there anything in your budget for that?
Well, we just purchased a brand-new dump truck for plowing. Unfortunately, with our garbage trucks, if we do get a, when we get our electric garbage trucks with our grant, we're not allowed to have another garbage truck. That's part of the grant. That if we get two electric garbage trucks, part of the program will not allow us to get, buy regular garbage trucks. That's in the grant.
But we don't have those garbage trucks.
Well, they're working now. They are working now.
Okay.
Yes, no, they are working now.
My next question is with the tennis courts?
Yes.
Okay, did we get the grant for that, or are you taking out of existing money, the repair at Memorial?
No, we did not get the grant. This is through our savings, and if you recall, we did get, I think it was about $197,000 from the state in funds to help fund any capital projects we had going on this year. So we're using that plus savings that we had in capital reserve, correct, Ms. Richardson?
We actually, we budgeted for $250,000. We thought that would be our district portion to go with the grant. But then the state came out with the $197,000 for capital projects, and we chose to choose, use that towards the project. So with the $250,000 we budgeted, and the $197,000 of the state, we were able to do the project.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
One last question, and this is speculative. Have you noticed any real gain by the solar system? I know it's not fully up yet as far as energy savings is concerned.
As of now, as I speak to our energy consultant, John Blair, we are saving money, and everything is mostly uppowered and generated except for the admin building, Swillic, and the transportation.
Anyone else?
Mr. Walsh will also do our, every year, we have Mr. Blair come to the board meeting later on in the year, and he goes over all of the savings that we've had.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. To the podium is Mr. Soto, our Transportation Director, who will now present the Transportation Budget.
Good evening to all of our distinguished board members, Ms. Primili, Ms. Richardson, and to everyone here present today, to all the parents, administration cabinet, and to all the students here present. First, before I start my presentation, I want to recognize all the effort of all of my bus drivers and van aides, my office staff, my shop garage team, who have worked diligently, laid countless hours to ensure that all of our students get transported effectively and efficiently. So I will be presenting, again, my name is Christopher Soto. I'm the interim Transportation Director, and I've only been here for the last four months. So I'll be conducting a budget presentation for the next upcoming school year for 2022, 2023. My budget includes facilities, operation costs, insurance, fuel, my staff's and uniforms for the shop garage team and for our bus drivers and aides, cleaning, maintenance, and repairs of our vehicles, training costs, Educational Service Commission costs. Educational Service Commission, many of you will recognize it as MOESC, which stands for the Momifin Ocean Educational Service Commission, who provides services for some of our non-public routes, our displaced children, and our special ed out-of-district schools. Aid and lieu, lease purchase, and our equipment, fleet parts, and office supplies. So a breakdown of my transportation budget, other purchase, professional services. This speaks about our operating software that we utilize, our phone systems, our GPS systems, our registrations for our vehicles, maintaining all documentation, drug testing for our staff, which is required twice per year, cleaning, repair, and maintenance of our vehicles, which is at $350,000. Our lease purchase, our lease purchase, this is a price that is established every year for our vehicles that we purchase on a yearly basis, which is $925,825. Our current aid and lieu of transportation is set at $3,335,000. Our contractor services and ESC fees, this is for our sped routes, which we have over 36 out-of-district placements and routes for our sped children, and also our displaced children, which we have to provide transportation according, based on our McKinley Vento, which is right now at $2,916,020. Our supplies and materials, this is our, this refers to our office supplies, which is set at $10,657, and for our vehicles, supplies and materials, which is $950,000, which is increasing based on inflation rates, our capability of finding parts, and trying to find, pay extra for the parts that we find, we have a task. Our fuels for our vehicles has also increased our prices, so it's set at $859,404. And our miscellaneous expense and insurance, which is set for $151,997. Our overall total for my particular budget is $9,405,447. My current budget is increasing by $1,540,276, and this is due to Consumer Price Index. Right now, state of New Jersey is current still at 1.69, but overall, state of New Jersey and cross-border New York has increased within the last year about 5%. School vehicles and parts inflation, again, our parts are increasing. Sometimes we have a bus stranded because we just can't find the parts for it. Sometimes the drivers, our head supervisor actually does a wonderful job in trying to get another bus that's not working, getting a part of that bus to make sure the other bus is working efficiently. That way, we could transport all of our students. Additional outside services repaired to all school vehicles. So our fleet, we actually maximize the potential of our school vehicles. For our type A vehicles, we only could use it for 12 years. For our type B, C, and D vehicles, we can only use it for 15 years. So what happens here is after the 10-year mark, we start incurring extra parts, extra costs to repair and maintain these vehicles. So that's why you're going to be seeing the high increase in, for parts for our vehicles. Increase in a non-public student enrollment. Prior to this current year, we was at about 1,800 students, and now we are reaching so far over 3,300 students. Our ESC additional service fees, prior to this school year, we was only paying MOESC 4%, and this year, they have raised it to 5.5%. Increase in an out-of-district per diem route cost. This is, this is actually has increased over the last increased over the last two years. So prior to COVID, an average route cost will be between $250 and $350, including aid costs. This year, a lot of our out-of-district routes have increased almost to $800 per day for a route. That means that a child that's taken from here to a local school in Eaton Town for a 30-minute ride, that's $800 per day, where two years ago, it was only $250. Vehicle supplies and material inflation rate and part shortages. So again, as everything else, food and services, also our parts for our vehicles, it has also been impacted by the inflation rate on our parts. Fuel cost has increased currently at $3.44 a gallon versus last year, which was at $2.50 a gallon. And increase on insurance costs and employee training. So currently, we are at, for our Jackson resident students transported, currently, we're transporting 7,966 students. For next school year, we are projected to transport 7,866 students. For our non-public transportation, last year, we was only transporting, currently, we're transporting 198 students through MOESC, and for next year, it's going to be determined as, right now, we are still receiving B-6T forms from all the non-public schools, which we not have received them all in total yet. Aid and lieu paid out. Currently, we are at 23, 2,388 and loo's, and next year, we're projected, at this moment, 3,145 students. So our expenditure allocated for the year 2020, 2020, 2021 was set at $1,328,132. Currently, we have spent it $2,2732,538, and we are budgeting for the next school years, it has increased to $3,145,538. Students served, for two, for the year 2020, 2021, we served 1,300 students, and this is for our aid and lieu, transportation services. Currently, we have paid out 2,300 students, and for next, for next school year, it is budgeted for 3,145 students. So an increase in students from previous year, for, for, from 2020, 2021 to the previous year, which is 2019, we only had an increase of 222 students. The year after, which is the year we're current, it was an increase to 1,080 students, and for the next school year, it's going to be an additional 765 students. The percentage and increase from previous years, as you see, in 2020, 2021, the increase was 27%. Last year was a, a great increase, which is 83%, and for next school year, it's going to be set at 32% increase. Some of the highlights that we have been able to establish right now, all of our fleet, thanks to the board members, and the work of Ms. Permili, Ms. Richardson, and the rest of the cabinet, we have able to establish tablets on all of our school buses. What does this mean? This will increase efficiency and ability to react to the changes, and can immediately send new bus routes to coverage for rounds. So right now, all the buses, we could check how fast the buses are going, if they stop, if they're tailgating, if they reverse too quick. These tablets are actually, each child is going to have an RFID, which you can actually sign on the bus, and they have to sign off the bus. So the school bus is not allowed to leave the yard or the school unless that child has got off the bus. So for example, if you call looking for your child, now we don't have to contact the driver. Now, using this technology, we can see that your child is still on the bus, which is a great future. As a parent, I wish we had this in our district, and I'm actually working with it. And for example, if you see the bottom picture, when the bus reaches your stop, the, the bus driver has all your child's information. So let's say, in the beginning of the school year, you don't, you missed the bus, or you don't know what bus your child is getting, the bus driver has the capability to search your child and tell you what bus route he's on. So that's some of the highlights from that particular point. And next, we have, it's called My Stop. I think this is a great idea. I think parents are going to love this one. So let's say it's 15 degrees weather, and it's cold outside. Now you don't have to wait outside in the cold. Now you know how far the bus is going to be from your stop. So now, and... So now, this is going to be able to tell the, even the schools how far the bus is out, if, has the bus arrived, and, and for the parents, again, it will be very simple. Once you download the app, this is something that we're launching, so we're going to be introducing it in phases. Hopefully by September, everything is going to be working smoothly. So please be patient, but now you're going to be able to see if the bus is five minutes away, or if the bus already passed your bus stop. And some of our transportation goals, to provide efficient and safe transportation to our students, to improve our department climate and culture, to hire new staff and retain current staff. This year has been very hard in our department. We've been losing drivers left and right, but still, our current staff does everything they can possible to ensure that your child gets home safely. Sometimes we're late 15, 20 minutes, but in comparison to all the school districts, sometimes even my school district, I got a letter the other day saying that your child's going to be late 45 minutes to an hour and a half every single day because they don't have bus drivers. So thankfully, Jackson has done a wonderful job. My host team has been able to transport each and one of your children in a timely manner, based on the resources we have allocated to them. Again, to provide a safe work environment for all of our staff, and to ha, to enhance staff training, to ensure we always providing the best services for your children. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Thank you to Mr. Boginsky, Mr. Bruno, and Mr. Rotante for all of the presentations this evening for the proposed budgets. We still have a lot of numbers to work through. We still are waiting our state aid numbers, so sometimes these things get massaged and changed a little bit in regards to the numbers we're dealing with, and we will keep the board informed. We definitely have some exciting improvements moving forward, working hard in the Transportation Department, clearly, in our facilities to upgrade some things that have been neglected over the years regard, in regards to all of our budget cuts, and again, some great things moving forward for our students. We have had, the past few board meetings, our, many non-public parents speak about transportation for their children. Obviously, we hear you, we understand that your desire is to have a bus for your children. As we have said before, with the bus driver shortage, it has been very difficult, but please know, we have been working hard to strengthen our communication and strengthen our systems within our Transportation Department. As Mr. Soto explained, we have some significant staff changes, we have some strong professional development happening, and some wonderful new aspects to our Transportation Department. But tonight, Ms. Richardson is going to present a brief overview of what is required of the district in regards to non-public transportation, the responsibilities, and the timeline for non-public. So Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Mrs. Permili. We hope that this presentation for its non-public transportation's responsibilities and timeline, we hope that it will help provide some context and background about the transportation process and the ways that we are working to serve Jackson students. When you're understanding the law, the law that we refer to is 18A 39 1.8. It requires Jackson to offer either transportation, or what is known as aid and lieu. We always call it aid and lieu, but it's aid and lieu of transportation. This goes to eligible students who wish to attend a nonprofit school within 2 to 20 miles from their Jackson home. It's two and a half miles for high schoolers. We accomplish this in a number of ways, including utilizing district buses when we can, when drivers are not in shortage, as they are right now, to accomplish our bus routes. We contract out the routes to private contractors or educational service commissions, or we enter into jointures with another school district to have its resident students join another bus run, being managed by another district. If the option allowed by law cannot be accomplished within the specific cost established each year by the Department of Education, which is 1,000 per student, then the district must offer the student what's called aid and lieu of transportation, AIL. We saw that in Mr. Soto's budget just recently. There's more information at that website if anybody's interested also. Within the law, there's responsibilities of parents, there's responsibility of school administrators, and there's responsibilities of the districts, and I'm going to briefly go through those. For the parent and guardian who sends their child to a non-public school, the school year before transportation is requested, and then we're talking March of the prior year, the parent is responsible to fill out a B-6T form. Submit this form, right now, the law says that they submit the form to their private school, or submit the B-6T to the Jackson School District website, which is a new thing that I'm going to talk about nearer at the end of the, of my presentation. The other thing that the parents have to do is to complete a B-7T form. This is new to us this year, for us and Jackson, but it is not a new requirement. This requirement has been on the law for quite some time. We just, this year, we are conforming to this regulation that requires us to have a B-7T. Any B-6T application received after March 10th is considered a late application. Eligible students will receive transportation or AIL based upon the date the application is received by the school district. The next page is the private school responsibilities. Right now, the school year, they're required to send the forms that they receive from all of the parents over to us. They collect all the B-6Ts and submit, submit them to the district, and again, I note that we are up, we're asking to change that process there, which I will talk about later. The next thing is that the school year, it, this is always before, prior to May 15th, the school times and calendars, they should submit to the school district also, letting us know what time their school starts, ends, and their calendar, because we, we oftentimes operate on different calendars. A school district is required to assist the non-public school between the September 1 to June 30th. Throughout the school year, January, May, it's the, we will send the list of students back to the, the private school, asking them to sign off, saying that yes, these students attended the school during the year, and that form is called a BAT, for them to confirm that for us. They send that back to us, and between that and the B-7T, we receive that, and now we're able to pay the parents. If they have, their, the non-public schools are also responsible for submitting any new B-6T forms for students within 30 days of registering with the school, or when there is an address change. Also notify parents of their responsibility to complete and return necessary documents. The Jackson School District's responsibility are in accordance with the dates and deadlines set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education's School, Office of School Transportation. Throughout the school year, we date stamp all of the forms upon receipt and verify information. The school year before transportation is requested, after March 15th of the preceding year, we prepare non-public school routes and put the routes out to bid. And by August 1st, we must notify parents and guardians of their application determination, whether or not they will receive transportation, or if they will receive AIL, if they're eligible. And throughout the school year, we are, prepare, we prepare our BATs forms and send it to each private school for their certification. And the last part is what we started new this year for us, was throughout the school year, for the January, January and May, we will send the B-7T voucher to the parent guardians for each eligible student, and that's what the law says to do. You know, our mission here at Jackson Board of Ed is to follow the law, whatever, what the law tells us that we must do, to serve the students of Jackson Township safely and efficiently, and we continue to solicit feedback from all stakeholders about how we can continue to improve our processes and procedures. We keep the lines of communication open. We have, you know, continued to adjust our website, that you can find at that, the address there, to get, put updates and forms. We're trying to automate as much as possible. The next page, I want to show you the timeline that we took during 2021. 2021 was a very trying year for us, where we were finding the bus driver shortage that was starting that year. The law requires us to, as I said, to inform parents by August 1st, but last year, what we did was, April 19th, we, we sent letters to the non-public schools, which got to the parents, about our process for the 21, 22 school year, and outreach to invested partners to gather input on the process. We talked to parents, we talked to our staff, the drivers that we had that were driving the non-public routes. We did a lot of informational meetings to understand the entire process. June 1st, we updated parents on the progress, we, and process of reviewing B-6Ts, and we explained the timeline to them. June 24th, we sent a notice of schools known at that date that would not receive transportation. So those parents would, if they were eligible, knew that they were going to be getting a aid and lieu. July 15th, we sent another notice that district was going, we were going to go out to bid on routes. And that was the first time, and since I've been here, that we've done that. We went out to bid on our routes, and, and we thought that we would be helpful in providing transportation to our non-public parents. And we let them know about that. We told them which schools were involved. July 22, we got the routes back, and we, we, we did not get anyone to bid on the route. So we let the parents know that, and we said that everyone else was going to be getting aid and lieu at that time. We explained that situation to everyone. Our timeline for 2022, with, after meeting with several people and talking with several departments here in the district, we, you know, due to the overwhelming response of last year's timeline, and the district worked hard to be able to provide this information as early as possible to help families plan for their child's school year. This, and I want to say, this is what we think we can do this year. However, I'm not committing that this is going to be every year going forward, but it is what we believe we can do this year. We are hoping, and I've been discussing this with the state of New Jersey, that we can allow parents to submit their B-6T to us online electronically. This is what I was talking about earlier. If they can do that and work with us in this process, that would take out a lot of time that's wasted in handling those forms. The district will accommodate those who don't use a computer. This, like I said, this is a new feature that we hope to put out as early as next week. By March 16th, the, after the deadline of March 15th, that'll, that'll allow us to go ahead and put these forms into routes that we can bid out to the providers who will bid on the routes. And we will get those bids back by April 13. We believe that's the process that it will take to come back to us by April 13. Therefore, by the board meeting on April 27th, we can submit it to the board for their approval, or just approval, of course, and by May 6, we would be in a position to notify parents whether or not we are able to transport their students or provide AIL. That is the plan that we are, we are putting together at this time. As a district, we have committed to strengthening our procedures regarding non-public transportation, improving our communication channels, and creating a sustainable model that will grow as our non-public community does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Just want to clarify a couple of things from the presentation. So there are some things that we can do and some things we can't do, obviously, and we are required to follow certain laws, and also required to be as fiscally responsible as possible to our, our district budget. We are required, correct me, Michelle, if I am wrong, Ms. Richardson, but we are required to try and route every student first before we ever make a commitment to go to providing aid and lieu, which is what we are doing and what we are, the timeline we're trying to move forward, going out to bid.
That is correct.
Thank you. And then, in the presentation, you mentioned that last year was the first time we had gone out to bid ourselves. It's not the first time we've gone for a bid. We've used a service before, but last year was the first time we used it. We did it ourselves.
Yes, everywhere, every year, well, including last year, we would always submit all of our B-6Ts to my... our B-6Ts to Mom with Ocean ESC to let them do the bidding for us. Last year, after they said that they could only contract maybe three schools, we said, let's take the rest of them and try to bid them ourselves, and it didn't work out, but we did make that attempt last year.
Yeah, we tried to make that attempt, so I appreciate that attempt. And this year, again, we feel we have our expertise now to be able to go out to bid ourselves and not get charged a fee for somebody else going out to bid for us.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying everything, I appreciate it. Before I end my superintendent's report, Mr. Walsh, I did just want to point out in our budget presentations this evening, the amount of times that we heard the word grant. We've made a commitment here over the last few years in this district to seek out as many grants as possible, based on knowing of the significant S2 cuts that we would have in this district, and I am proud to say, our staff has risen to that occasion, and that was just a sampling of some of the grants that bring in additional monies to provide additional programs or support programs in our district. I'm very proud of all the work that our staff has done in this district to acquire so many grants. So with that, I conclude my superintendent's report, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mrs. Parmelli. Okay, standing committee reports, state, county, school boards.
The next county meeting, February 22nd, at 6:30, will be virtual.
Thank you. Parent group liaison, the next meeting will be March 9th, it will be virtual, right? We're going to do that live or are we going to do virtual? The parent group.
Dr. Taylor, is that virtual or is that in person?
Virtual, thank you.
Virtual. Okay, special education.
The next CAC meeting will be transitioned into adulthood, life after 21, will be Monday, March 14, 2022, at 6:30, will be virtual.
Thank you. Scholarship, right now, we are in that segment where the seniors are applying for scholarships through the guidance count, through the guidance office. Okay, we have one problem going on right now. The committee basically pays for scholarships through its ad book, and right now, we are desperately looking for more ads for that scholarship night. So if anybody hears this and is listening, okay, we can use a couple more ad sponsors, okay, for the ad book. We have plenty of sponsors for scholarships, but there are certain scholarships that the committee itself gives out at the end of the year. The more money we have, the more scholarships we give out. Building and grounds, you seen the report up there about building and grounds, there's the EV quotes are out, okay, for the garbage truck, the, what do you call, electrical station that it'll need, fuel depot testing with the state is going on right now at Jackson Memorial for some corrections which were made there, okay, and lead testing is starting in the district for anybody who is interested in that, okay. We are keeping up with all of our requirements with the environmental protection in the state of New Jersey. Okay, next up, budget and finance.
So tonight, you saw that the budget was proposed in the slides that was shown, and this week will be, either this week or next week, we'll be meeting as a group.
Transportation, as you can see from the slides, the district is using technology to speed up the process of the non-district, okay, students, all right, and we also have many, many new technology that we're using for the safety and efficiency of the transportation. Curriculum committee.
My on. The curriculum committee met last Wednesday, February 9th, so the members are Mr. Palmieri, Mrs. Baracus, Mr. Rotante, Mrs. Parmilli, Mrs. Lisetra, and myself. We discussed our five-year curriculum plan, which was approved in August of last year. The programs being implemented this year are world language, phys ed, health for grades K through 12. New Jersey Bill 4454 is not being implemented at this time, all of the resources are under review. We are currently reviewing math K through 5, science K through 12, with plans for implementation in the 22, 23 school year. ELL, which is our English Language Learners, instruction remains an important aspect of our district, and as the numbers continue to expand, we are adding additional teachers and programs to more schools in September. And as you all saw, Mr. Rotante gave a very in-depth curriculum report as well, so, thank you.
Policy committee.
The policy subcommittee met on Wednesday, February 3rd. Both new and existing policies were reviewed, including anti-hazing, biased crimes, and bias-related acts, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions and head injuries, as well as high school graduation. As always, all policies can be located on the district website for your full review. Thank you.
Thank you. The enrollment study committee has not met since reorganization, we will probably meet sometime in late spring. Okay, I need a motion to approve the policy and regulation first reading.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes, I just had one question, Mr. Walsh, can I ask a question to Ms. Parmilli from her earlier statement? I just wanted to clarify, you had mentioned contact, close contact tracing in schools will continue, but those students will not have to quarantine if asymptomatic, so healthy students can remain in school.
Yes, that's the direction we're moving in.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of the minutes.
Motion.
I can't.
I got to finish. The official board meeting, January 5th, 2022, reorganization meeting, the closed session meeting, January 19th, 2022, the official board meeting, January 19th, 2022, committee of the whole business meeting. They've of course have been already approved. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of the bills list.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of the treasurers and board secretaries' reports.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to open the public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. The public forum will be for questions on the agenda only. When your name is called by Mrs. Richardson, please come to the microphone. Each person will have a maximum of three minutes to speak due to the large number of signees. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Mrs. Richardson, please call the first person.
Hope Drew?
Hello, everyone, is this on? Hello? Okay. I know I don't have a lot of time, so I want to say this quick. Um, okay, where do we start here? I've been coming to meetings for the last six or seven years in the town, and I noticed in the last two or three meetings, the last three Board of Ed meetings, and the last two council meetings, there are words that are continuously used, quality of life, safety, the LSTA, community, and 113 private schools. I want everyone to say this and think in your head, 113 private schools. And I know you're saying to yourself, how on God's earth are we going to do this? How are we going to transport to 113 private schools? Sorry, it's very annoying. And while you're thinking that, you have to say to yourself, how is this going to affect our public schools? What classes, what programs are going to be cut, and how are we paying for this? So while you're thinking of this number, 113, in your head, let's go back to quality of life. Quality of life is a word that I've been using, and many of us passionately been using to, to fight for our quality of life in our towns, but right now, the quality of life issues that were brought up in the meetings is about our children's education. Our children's education in the public school system is the most important thing to us, and right now, it's to preserve it, it's to protect it, to make sure things are not getting cut in order to bus to 113 private schools. I know the number has been brought up before, that, you know, right now, there's 3,200 students, as we saw in the report, that's not true. Next year will be 3,200. We were told at multiple meetings and the articles that next year, there's going to be 5,000 private school students. That's not true either, as we know from now, from the transportation report, but this is the things that are being said. These are the fears, and this is the things that, as a public school parent, I have a right, as a self-preservationist, preservationist, to fight for my children's schools, to make sure that this is not going to be affecting our public school, children's academics in any way whatsoever. So, another thing that was brought up during these meetings was the word safety. I don't, I still can't wrap my head around it, how the private school community said that this is a public safety issue. I don't see how it's a public safety issue as far as they're concerned. I mean, one example was put that, you know, you put your children in an unregulated carpool. Well, that's not on you. I mean, you get the $1,000, you are the ones who decide where you put your kids. That's not a justification for us to now outsource busing, that we can't even, that we can't even figure out how we're going to pay or even take care of our public school busing right now. So safety was also brought up, but really, the public safety issue is our town, our neighborhoods. Busing will be, traffic would be insane.
Excuse me, Mrs. Drew, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you, I'll be back.
Okay. I'm sorry for missing up your last name.
So it looks, is this on? So it looks like there's going to be a bid put out, and if you pick a company, are you going to pick a company that's safe? Jay's Bussing is a really big one, main one around here. They're very unsafe. I have some documents that say how they have the highest crash rates, poor inspection, traffic tickets, safety violations. I've seen them traveling myself, run red lights, speed through residential neighborhoods. So when you decide, just as an example, say Jay's Bussing has the best bid, and Joe Schmo has number two. Is safety a factor and track record before saving money? Because safety's paramount, and children are going to be on the bus, people are driving in Jackson, there's pedestrians to think of too for their safety. So when you pick a company, are you going to investigate that it's safe? Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Parmello and esteemed board members. My name is Malka Canaric, and I'm a resident of Jackson, New Jersey, for the past three and a half years. I currently have two children in private schools in Lakewood, and will have a third child in school this coming September. Last summer, I spent two entire months working on feasible transportation arrangements for my two children, for my two school-aged children for the current school year. It was a time of anxiety and a lot of frustration until I was able to settle an arrangement. As a full-time working mom in the already stressed healthcare industry, the prospect of not having transportation for my children was daunting. I hope, with the help of the Board of Ed, that in the future, this process can become smooth and pleasant for all Jackson families. I understand this will take a lot of work, but I am confident the Board of Ed will do the best they can. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank a very special friend, not only to me, but to the whole, to all Jackson families, Mrs. Tara Rivera. Tara, you are a true role model. I have gotten to know you over the past few years. I see how you go through hoops and bounds to care for your special needs child, and it is truly remarkable. And after all that, as if you don't have enough on your own plate, you take the same heart and the same fight and advocate for all children in Jackson. We are very lucky to have you. Thank you, everyone, for giving me this opportunity. It is an honor to be part of this great town.
My name is Devora Greskin. Firstly, I wanted to start off that I heard this afternoon that Lindsay will be resigning, effective March 7th, so I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Lindsay for that standing work she has done for the district. Every time I call as a school transportation administrator, Lindsay gets me to the right department, gets me the information in the most timely manner I've ever imagined, and it's going to be a big loss, and we're really going to miss her, so thank you very, very Next, I just wanted to bring up, you talked about the Aiden Lu money, the Aiden Lu payments that we, most of us are getting as, instead of transportation this year. So majority of, I am the transportation director for the Lake River and Bees Fega. Almost all of our Jackson students do not have busing, rather they receive the Aiden Lu. I cannot begin to describe to you the staggering amount of phone calls, text messages, and emails that I have been getting the last two weeks. I am listening to parent after parent describe their individual difficulties getting the proper amount of Aiden Lu money. I've spoken to representatives of other schools as well, and I know we are not the only school dealing with this issue. We also work with other townships, such as Tom's River and Howell, yet we're only encountering these discrepancies when dealing with our Jackson Township students. Now, these results of the Aiden Lu are included in this promised improvement of communication, yet quite obviously, it's not acceptable, and this is not going to work. So I know that you will take this issue seriously and take accountability for the depth of this issue and continue to improve. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Devora Callen. I'm going to speak a little to what Mrs. Greskin was speaking about in terms of the Aiden Lu budget item. So I'm a Jackson resident for six years. Every year is another story, and I won't take the time to go through all that, but for this year, the process was that toward the middle of the year, I filled out the B-6T forms as per protocol, gave them into the school. At the end of the summer, I got notice in the mail that my oldest child is going to be bused through the district, which is going very smoothly, thank you very much for that. For the other children, of course, I obviously expected I would receive the Aiden Lu. For the other children, of course, I obviously expected I would receive the Aiden Lou per NJ Law, as they did not receive the district busing. However, a few short weeks ago, I got a call from representative of my two younger daughter's school, saying that the district could not locate one of the two forms that was submitted. She asked that I come down and fill out another one to replace the misplaced form. As well, it was interesting to note that I, a few short while later, received four B-70 forms, each in a separate envelope, with an individual stamp, three weeks after I already mailed in my B-70 forms. So, of course, concerned that those forms are also lost, I emailed that B-70 email address to check in on the status. Kathy responded promptly, professionally. She reassured me that I can disregard all four of those forms. They were sent just in case. But that said, upon receiving the Aiden Lou check, I was only compensated a fraction of what was owed for that one child who had the misplaced form. And unfortunately, it seems, like Devora Greskin was saying, that I'm just one among many who had their forms lost. So, you know, in closing, it just appears that there are processes that are broken, and it should not be acceptable that citizens are being shorted what's owed to them by law to compensate for transportation in lieu of the district transportation. So, I would just like to thank all those involved in working to sort these things out, including all those in the Board of Ed Transportation Office, and the busy moms and private citizens who are taking hours and hours of their own time unpaid to compensate for the myriad issues that have come up. Thank you.
I wanted to first thank everyone here. Since last month, I said I wanted to trust you and trust that as a neighbor, you would look out for us, and I could not have been happier and more excited and more grateful when I saw the statement on the website saying that, and I quote, "We are eager to find solutions that are responsive to the needs of all of our families and taxpayers of Jackson." So, thank you. It's nice to be able to give that trust and have that trust respected. I just wanted to bring up concerns, because I'm listening closely, and I'm watching, and I'm trying to show myself that that trust that we've been shown is something that will be carried through. Having said that, the two things that were brought up, that their only obligation we have from Jackson is either transportation or the Aiden Lou. As far as Aiden Lou, we've heard, unfortunately, some issues that have come up lately. I spoke to someone who has gotten many, many emails that we were, that families that were supposed to get, I believe it's 500 per child, got checks that said, and I have exact numbers here, $66.66. There were families that got $33.33, $271.95, $61.32, and $0.50, and the $0.32 were for two children combined. One placed, a mother said that she sent the form and was told, "Well, you need to provide proof that we received it." She's like, "How do I provide that?" Someone else was told, "Well, you didn't use the right color ink pen, and that's why you didn't receive your check." So, it's just hard to feel that trust in the Aiden Lou process when there have been so many discrepancies. As far as actual transportation, as we heard tonight, I believe from the representative of transportation, that there is a shortage of drivers. I know that the Lakewood buses, or LSTA, whatever they have, I think they said it was 62 buses that pass by Pawnee and County Line every day. So, they're already driving by. I know there's 40 buses that pass by Clear Stream, which is much closer to my home. And when there's 40 buses passing right near me anyhow, and I'm going, "Well, maybe it might be worth it to see if we can get some sort of, you know, joint effort here." As far as traffic, I share the same concerns that were listed, about tons of buses everywhere. For me, I feel like if a bus can fit 20 students, I'd rather see them all in one bus than 20 separate individual cars in the traffic lane, so I appreciate the acknowledgement of that. And then, in general, my fear of just the, and I'll finish up, the schools that we're sending to, if I have a child in primary, third grade, and eighth grade, they have two different start times and three different dismissal times. It's not like the public school system where you have kind of, I'd be thinking of it as like two, I think at most, a start time and two ending times with after-school activities, that it's different kids on different days. One child might stay for lessons on Tuesday and Thursday, not Monday and Wednesday. Here, it's every single day, the same dismissal times, the same amount of kids, and they all have different times that we would need for buses for. Just another thing that I'm, I'm just wondering, is it feasible to get that done in the time given? And just as a mom, August for me is a little late, only because if we're not getting the transportation from you guys, we need to arrange vans. And as we see the communities growing, and the bus drivers there's a shortage of, van drivers even less. So, if I'm not getting busing, I need to start putting together a van yesterday. I need to be giving deposits, I need to be making promises and commitments that I can't break. And if I wait till August to find out, then I'm really stuck, because either I've given all this money to the vans I'm not getting back, or I don't give the money to the van and I pray and hope that the Jackson busing comes through, and then it doesn't, and now I'm really back at square one.
Sarah, I'm sorry, your time is up.
No problem. Thank you for my time. I appreciate it. Thank you for listening. And thank you again for what you've done so far.
Debbie Giraslawick?
I hope you all had a good month. I was here last month, and I'm back here again tonight, to talk about the transportation for non-public school students. To be perfectly honest, I have a couple papers written with notes about questions and things we discussed last time, looking for answers. And Ms. Richardson, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that presentation. I recognize the time and effort that went to put into that, and anyone else who was involved, and that it really provided information to the questions I had, the timeline, and the fact that July and August just wasn't workable, and the fact that you went ahead and bumped up that timeline, even though you're not required to do so by law, to the benefit of all the non-public school parents, is incredible. It is noted, it is appreciated. So, most of what I have to say, I don't have to say anymore, and since it's a long night, I'm going to get up, I'm going to go, but I wanted to thank you for that. The one thing I would just like to mention, that I think still needs improvement, is the Transportation Office. And for those children who are still getting the Aiden Lou right now, and the process has gone going, there's still a lot that needs to be done. I'm hopeful that with now Mr. Soto in charge, he can hear some of the concerns we have, but, you know, just to highlight one small thing that I think would help with the amount of phone calls, emails going on between parents and the school this week, is the invoices we get with the check has line items per child. So, for example, I have three children, it'll have three lines, and then I got one check. Thankfully, mine was for the full amount. But it doesn't say the name of the child. And I think the first step that all the parents are going to do is try to figure out which child did they not get paid for. And if it's already being divided up, line one, line two, line three, it's a slight more input of data, just write which child it is, and then the parents know which school to reach out to for the child, and when they're reaching out to the Transportation Office, everyone's on the same page earlier on. So, that's a suggestion that I hope you can take into continuing improving the communication and dispersing the Aiden Lou checks. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing what you accomplish in the next month, because it looks like a lot was accomplished this month. Thank you.
Nick DeFilippo?
I just had a, just a suggestion for the budget slides. I think it'd be more impactful if you have previous year, what was spent, and then what's proposed for the new budget. I just think the conversation would be better served when you could see what sort of increase you have, especially for each line item, right? I think one of the first slides was a decrease by 1.2 million, right? But then, overall, decrease was only, say, 750,000, right? Which means something increased by probably half a million, right? Maybe good, just to get a conversation starter, right? I know the board didn't have too many questions about it. Mr. Walsh, I think, was the only one, but... And then, just one additional, with the purchase of the new laptops, can someone tell me, what happened to the old ones? I'm just curious, did we get any money for them? I was thinking, I would love to have a backup laptop at the house, right? For, if it's offered for sale, just a thought. But can anyone tell me right now, what happened to the old ones?
Right now, we respond to all the questions at the end, and by wrote this down, we'll absolutely respond.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for your continued efforts in looking out for the children of this district. Entering a little past my fourth decade working in this district, I'd like to emphasize to you that I appreciate your work and so forth, and that I would love to continue to see that you work on not allowing the resources of this district to be exploited. A lot of, the reason why, besides teaching here, I moved to Jackson, was so that my children could get a quality education. I have five children, one of them graduated from Lakewood, which I did, and that was the last child that I could have in the Lakewood School District, because the resources were being exploited there. And classes were being taken away. We know what happened with the district there, with monies coming up short and so forth, and a lot of that had to do with transportation. So, I would continue to thank you for your diligence and being very tight on that and looking into that, and I continue to encourage you to stay on top of transportation, that it not get out of hand, and we wind up losing resources here for our children. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, that is the last name I have.
Thank you. At this, oh, motion to clo, okay. Superintendent will respond to questions. Motion to close public forum, number one.
Motion. Second.
By acclamation, aye. Now, the superintendent will respond to those questions asked in the first forum.
Okay, I think my mic's on, yes. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. First of all, I will say that all decisions made in this district are always focused on what's most important for our students and student programming. There are always the decisions we make, is the first decisions, to maintain program. Again, you know, I hate to always keep saying the S2 cuts, the S2 cuts, but I've been here through all of these cuts, and that's always the conversation we have, is we must maintain our programs and expand where we can in our programs. I am proud to say that we continue to do that. We do have a district with stellar programs. When I first came to this district, I highlighted how impressed I was in the offerings in both of our high schools. There's something for every student in their interest, and I am, and this board, and this district, and our staff are all committed to keeping them. In fact, over years, we've expanded them. Miss La Citra, the Art Academy, that has just recently been launched over the last few years. So, we are always making decisions on what's in the best interest of our students, and we continue to do that, and will. I do want to turn this over to Ms. Richardson to explain a little bit about the prorating of the Aiden Lou and what's been happening, and also, if you could explain the process for going out to bid and what's required of us when those bids come in to look at.
Sure.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to answer, the one question was on my mind about the laptops. Every time we get rid of a lot of equipment, we put out a, first of all, we ask the board to eliminate the equipment, you know, they have to, what is it called? Surplus the equipment, first of all. And then, there are companies out there that will buy our equipment, and that, we put it out there to, again, bring money back into the district. As for the Aiden Lou, the amounts are prorated by the date that we receive them. Many people move in at different times during the year, and we do it on a daily basis. If, it comes out to about $5.50 a day. So, if you came in in November, you're only going to get a few days of transportation out of that. And so, we prorate the amount. If you don't think it's done right, you should definitely send an email to the b6tquestion@jacksonsd.org, and we will reevaluate and give you an answer. If the form was not stamped in by us and proof that we received it, that is a problem. We don't know that we received it at the date that you think we received it, so we have to go by what we know. And I want to say that, one of the things that we met about was to discuss that, once we go to the new process, you will receive an immediate receipt with the information that you submitted, but it'll be date-stamped and timestamp that you sent it to us. That is the process that we want to go to. Is there something else?
The bid process.
Okay. Actually, Mr. Soto is here, who can tell us specifically about the bid process.
So, the bid process is a 21-day process. We first notify all the qualified bidders, 21 days out from the bidder. But in order for us to be efficient with that, we need all the forms. What do I mean by that? If I have half the school forms by March 15th, then they send us another half, we don't have actual, the whole information for us to have a successful bidding route. What does that mean? If, for example, your school has 50 children, and I only got 25 forms, and I bid it out, that means the other 25, I have to provide and document that I had a successful bid for each and one of the children. So, it's imperative for each one of the non-public schools to submit those forms by March 15th. That way, we have adequate information to have a successful bid. That being said, I believe the bid opening is on April 13th. 21 days before that, we will submit to the newspapers, notifying all bidders or interested bidders to bid on the information. 14 days out, we will submit the, all the routes that are being posted, as, right now, I'm working on with last year's information, but I cannot submit them with last year's information. I need current information for this year. So, if you could voice that to your schools, to, it's imperative that we receive them as soon as possible. That way, we can have an efficient and productive route, and we'll assist you with your needs and concerns that you have established this night. Seven days before that, we have to submit that documentation to the county superintendent, and he actually has to approve the bid. After that, on April 13th, we will open all the bidders, if we receive any bids, and then we will adequately, it's presented to the board, and the board has to vote on approving the bids. So, it's a process, it's not something that we could do in 48 hours. So, we are working diligently. Again, it is time-consuming, but trust me, I just want to share that we are working diligently, we are taking your concerns into consideration, and we do the best we can, the best we can every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Okay, Mr. Walsh, I think I've commented on everything.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a short 10-minute break. Need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. Okay. By acclamation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board members, back to your seats. Superintendent. Did she go to the bathroom? Oh, she did, okay. Okay, at this time, we're going to do resolutions for action. Need a motion to move finance?
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to move facilities?
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move programs?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move students?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I had one question for you. Number one, under students, there's, there's no fee next to tuition. Do you know what that is?
The fee for 1A, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the new, the fee is the 90,000, the tuition is 90,000.
The fee is the 90,000, under B?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a change in placement from, from A to B, B's the new placement.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question, can I just ask real quick?
Go ahead.
Is that okay? It says, number 10, where you're speaking about combining the gymnastics teams, just curious, how, how does that work as far as getting kids to one school or the other? And which one's like the home school for us?
I just happen to know this because I started it. They practice and they compete in the same gym over there at Liberty, it's the aux gym. They share equipment, they always have. So for them to work together and, you know, make up one team, and that's what it'll be, it'll be one team. They'll compete together, okay, against other teams.
So the practice and everything's the same?
The practice and everything. And in fact, okay, we rent out that space to Manchester, they also use it and they work around one another as far as practice and matches are concerned.
Okay, I'm a yes, thank you.
Dr. Osman? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Okay, motion to move personnel?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um.
Go ahead.
So I noticed on here, there's some information for different coaches, and just curious, are we allowed to vote if our children participate in the sport?
Yes.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Seeing no more, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All questions and concerns will be answered and addressed at the end of the public forum once all individuals have been allotted an opportunity to speak. When your name is called by Mrs. Richardson, okay, please come to the microphone. Each person is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Mrs. Richardson?
Yes, the first name I have is Hope Drew.
Hi again, I hate this microphone. Three minutes is way too short, so I'm going to try and be real quick. I left off on quality of life. I understand that the non-public community, it affects their quality of life, I get it. Six kids, say, they have six kids going to six different schools at six different start times, six different end times, you know, six days a week. It would affect anyone's quality of life. But what's being asked is that the money in loo is no, they don't, it's not needed anymore, they prefer, because it's affecting quality of life, to have busing. Outsourcing busing right now to 113 private schools and we know that number will get bigger and it's going to grow. 30% every year is what was said in the article. I don't know if anyone is aware, I'm hoping people are aware, but this isn't the first time that private school busing has absolutely decimated a private, um, public school at all. Rock, East Ramapo, New York is the first one. And just to give an example, Hank Green, Hank Greenberg, I'm sorry, Henry Greenberg did, was a monitor, put in place a jury report on East Ramapo. And in their year of favoring private school busing and funding, within 2009 to 2012, they eliminated 400 positions in the school within that district. East Ramapo was known at the time as one of the best public school districts in the state of New York. They eliminated 400 positions, teachers, 162 of them, in elementary schools, 93, 75 in elementary. The list goes on and on. Teachers assistants, 49 positions. 50% of attendance of teachers, all social workers, supervisors of speech, OT, PT. Now, we listened right now to the budget today and we saw how amazing our school system is. Just alone on the volunteer parts that aren't even getting funding is amazing, but the funding part, this is not a matter of if, this is a matter of when. This is actually going to happen. This happened to Lakewood. So this isn't something we're making up and, you know, whatever you want to call us tomorrow on the fake Facebook pages and say that we're standing up here with hate, but we're just like everyone else. We're here for the quality of life of our children to see what's best for our families, but to make the quality of life of the private school sector, which I get is, it's, it's unsustainable. You're taking, you're going to take away from our school system, our children, to make their quality of life better. So how is that going to happen? It's unsustainable. The law was written in 1967, this, the mandate that's right now is happening for the state. It's outdated. It needs to be visited at the state level. I mean, that's the only thing that we should be doing right now. It shouldn't be a conversation of how we're going to do it, when we're going to do it, and who's going to suffer the consequences? Who's going to suffer the consequences? The public school system will absolutely suffer the consequences. 2012 to 2013, they eliminated positions. Supervisor of technology, director of secondary education, teachers training for technology, buildings and ground position. Mr. Bruno, I think your name, you wouldn't have a job. Title I summary appropriate.
Mrs. Drew, I'm sorry, your time is up.
But I do get to come back again, because I mean, three minutes is not enough.
After everyone speaks.
There's so many things that need to be discussed.
Chris Kissabath?
Can you hear me? I read an article today in a local news media, and this is why I'm asking this question. And I'm used to going like council meetings where you ask a question, they answer you kind of right away, but you're going to do it at the end. Does the mayor of our town or the council of our town have a say with any school issues? Has the mayor or town council had any communication such as meetings with the school? And was anyone else there, like the LSTA or possibly public, uh, private school administrators? If yes, either if they met with you or spoke with you, what was said at the advice of the mayor and the town council? I only ask this because when I read that article today, it made it sound like there was some kind of meeting or communication. Thank you.
Eli Gallagher?
My question is concerning the, the actions of the security officers last month. I'm sure everyone knows what we're talking about, that two times in a row, two months in a row, me and my wife and my children have been escorted out of your meetings because we talked out of turn. That's basically what happened. Because all you have the right to do is shut your meeting down, you don't even have the right to escort anyone out, and neither does your security, as per Jackson Police Department. So, the gentleman that we're talking about, I'll tell you right now. Kelvin Green and Ray Maluski, both of them, okay? Both of them stepped up in the face of my wife, who just had a baby six months ago, and stood over top of my six-month-old and were screaming at us to leave, per your orders. This attorney here who has his privilege with the board right here, him and the superintendent told him to treat me and my wife and my six-month-old and my two children that way. You ordered him to do so on film, correct? Correct. I know it's correct, I'm just reiterating. So, basically, you're telling them to physically assault us with their presence, right? Because they're six inches from my face. Six inches from my face, correct? No, 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 you don't get to talk right now, I get to talk, then you get to talk, right? This is how this works, right? You want to interrupt?
You can't, you can't lie. You, you can't say whatever you want. You can't put allegations out there in public, all right?
We'll respond to you at the end.
I bet you will.
We will.
Bet you will. I don't, I want to know why he's not being escorted out. Where's Kelvin? Kelvin, get over here and jump in this guy's face.
Okay, that's inappropriate, please.
Is it, is it inappropriate now? You know what's inappropriate?
You know, Mr. Gallagher, I have asked you time and time again to show me the same respect that I show you.
Yeah, show me the same respect and stop talking during my three minutes, poor Millie.
I will add more time if I need to.
Fantastic. You want to talk?
I don't appreciate the lies and, and that spreading of inappropriate and wrong information. No, I'm not going to engage in this. If you, I'm not going to engage in this. Okay, finish what you have to say, please.
Thank you for allowing me to finish during my three minutes that you just interrupted. You should be escorted out by Kelvin. Kelvin? Kelvin, come on down here and get poor Millie and get her out of here, because she's out of order. You're all out of your minds. The way you treated my wife and my children and me because we disagreed with you, you got no right, and Jackson Police agrees.
Edward Kaufman?
I got questions. Feel free to answer me at the end or an email, you all have it. I want to know who elected the board attorney? I wanna know who elected the board attorney. I wanna know what his position is exactly, and what right he has to sit at that table and order anybody out of a public meeting that is required by law. The answer is simple, he has no authority. He should not even be up there. I operated his retainer agreement. The superintendent is claiming confidentiality, attorney-client privilege. Where's the retainer agreement? Did she pay him personally? Is there a contract with the board? Those, those questions need to be answered, and right now they're blocking my operas. I demand that they be answered. The board needs to demand an answer to that question. There's something going on here that they don't want us to find out. I wanna talk to the moms. Because apparently, every single mother that has a child in this room is a child abuser. They're keeping their children out late. They're abusing them by bringing them to a public board meeting, and somebody up here called Child Services on them and made that accusation. Child Services confirmed that. It's your job to find out who it was, because what you did is illegal. It's a false allegation of child abuse. Ordering two grown men to remove a young couple with minor children is menacing. Jackson PD needs to arrest them, it's on video. Getting in their face implying that you're gonna get physical with them is assault. Jackson PD needs to arrest them, and if the board had any, any understanding of the law, like you keep saying with your funny slides, you would file the charges. You had no legal right to escort them out, you had no legal right to have your security menace them, you had no legal right for them to assault them by violating the six feet of social distancing and implying that they were going to get physical with them, to the point that I had to get up and intervene, and step between and let the security guards know, physical touch was not gonna happen. I would not allow it, as a public citizen. Every single mother in this room is here fighting for their kids. Every single one of them, but somebody labeled them child abusers. It's disgusting. I can't even begin to understand what is going on here. But I know for a fact, you talk about following the law. Our dear leader, Mr. Murphy, declared that COVID is gone on March 6th at midnight, it's gonna disappear. There is no more COVID, no one needs to worry anymore, no one needs to force mask our children, deprive them of their rights under color of law, which is a felony in every single instance. That's a law. We wanna talk about that? Maybe we could put up a nice slide explaining what the Constitution says. Our children are allowed to breathe. Nobody here has the authority to stop that but God. How you don't understand that is beyond me.
Mr. Kaufman, your time is up. Mordecai Globin? Suri Robinson?
Hi, good evening. First of all, thank you for all that you do, the more meetings we attend, the deeper understanding we have, and deeper appreciation for what you do and all the minute details that have to be discussed, decided on. It's also really nice for our children to get to see what goes behind the education, not just take everything for granted. I also wanted to say, we're sorry to see Lindsay go. We've also had really good experience working with her in fixing our B-60, B-70 forums, and I know that schools and other parents have said that as well, so she has big shoes to fill, and we will miss her. I wanted to thank you for your commitment to the hard changes, date changes, the process changes, for respecting our needs as members of the Jackson community, and the commitment that you have. By now, you know how important busing is to us, and these changes are really wonderful to see. We cannot have even, you know, expected such detailed changes and thought-out processes. One thing that I wanted to mention is the timestamp, the date and timestamp is really, really important, it's just the importance of that, because a lot of the discrepancies are, you know, discrepancies between when the parents and the school said they give it in and when it was received, so that's really important. And then just another suggestion, with the B-80 forums are given out in January and June, I believe. If those possibly would be given much earlier, the schools would have time to cross compare their, you know, official time, date stamps, and what the B-80 is gonna be funding off of. That just might be another suggestion in the process to have less mistakes and speed up the, you know, funding. We really look forward to continuing to watch the process happen, and we really appreciate all the change that you've been putting in so far. So thank you, and have a good night.
Ilana Robinson?
Hi, my name is Ilana Robinson. I want to thank all the people on the Board of Ed Education for working so hard since the last time I was here. I know you have been working so hard to help make sure that me and all my friends can get busing. We really appreciate it. Have a great night.
Jennifer Cusinelli?
Welcome to all the new board members. I just have a comment. I'm just wondering, will the board be willing to pass a resolution calling on state legislatures to enact state legislation requiring private school students to complete the same standardized testing as public school students? This would ensure that taxpayers' money used for transportation and special needs for private schools is a good investment. Also, I wanna talk about safety. I have two children, they're sophomores. They are expected to stand on a shoulder on Stump Tavern Road, which is 55 miles an hour. I did speak with Ms. Richardson last year, asking if the buses could please come inside the development and pick them up for safety issues. And she did evaluate the situation, and had told me that the buses couldn't come in the neighborhood because it was small, and the, um, buses could hit the cars. However, the buses are going in the neighborhood for, um, elementary school and middle school. And I find it concerning that my children are expected to wait on Stump Tavern Road, again, where the speed limit is 55 miles an hour, with no sidewalk, on a shoulder. When it snows out, where are they supposed to stand? And I think if we're gonna talk about safety, we need to think about the high school students, as well as the elementary students and the middle school students. Also, I wanted to comment on, um, the unsustainability of what we are facing in our future. And I think that if we are going to accommodate certain groups, we should think about accommodating all the public students also. There are many students in this district that would like to go to a different high school for different sports programs. And there are many parents that would like to send their children to different schools for different reasons. So if we're gonna accommodate a certain sector, I think that we need to think about the repercussions, because you can't discriminate against a certain sector of people who have been in public school for years, and accommodate unrealistic expectations with the private sector. Thank you.
Shavi Heller?
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see all of you again. The last time I was here, I discussed all of the issues that we are currently having with transportation, and why we are desperate for something to change. Tonight, I'm back because it has been four weeks since the last meeting, and until now, I haven't heard much regarding the progress we were hoping for, and I'm so grateful to see all the work that is being put in to helping us. I just wanna take a minute to tell all the residents of the town that send to the public school that transportation is just a drop in the bucket of the aid that we receive from the Jackson Township. We are all taxpaying citizens who do not take advantage of the public school system. The only aid we are requesting from the Board of Ed is transportation. That's it. So imagine that we would all be sending to the public schools, how much more would that cost every month? Along those lines, I just wanna say that we are ready to give you all the paperwork that you need to accelerate the process to help us out, and get us busing that we really, really can use. We really appreciate that you see how important this issue is, and that you are willing to escalate it so that we can work on a positive change now. Thank you again for hearing me out. It means so much that you take the time to hear our concerns, and we are looking forward to working together with you to come up with proper solutions. Have a great night.
Miriam Heller?
Hi, everyone, my name is Miriam Heller. I am 11 years old and I go to private school. Every morning, I wake up and think to myself, how will I get to school today? And I ask my mother what the plan is. She tells me which neighbor I should be expecting or if it's her turn to drive. Once my van gets here, I have to figure out where I will be sitting. We are a group of girls in a regular-sized minivan and sometimes smaller cars. Seating is usually complicated, and many of us don't feel comfortable squishing in the back, and that sometimes causes arguments unnecessarily. By the time I get to school, I feel very stressed out. It is sometimes hard to start my day like this. Even though I'm just 11 years old and my voice probably doesn't mean so much to you, I'm asking you to please take my word into consideration. Having busing will make our school days so much more enjoyable, because then we will be able to sit much more comfortably and not have to rely on our parents to drive us. We know how hard it is for them. I would like to think this, take this opportunity to thank you all for doing everything that you always do for us. It means so much that you care. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Nicole Robb?
Hi, everybody. Gosh, I don't even know where to begin anymore. This is all just, this is all just very sad. Education in general, these meetings, just everything about it. I've been in education for 22 years, and those of you that have been in it just as long as me, I'm sure are feeling the same, that this just does not sit right, does not feel right. Things have changed, and not for the better. And it's not just Jackson, it's education across the whole state of New Jersey. You're right, the, the slide before with all the teachers leaving. Teachers are retiring early, they're taking medical leaves, they're doing anything they can to get out. And that's what's really sad. And it is because of the state, the state's demands, the state's mandates. But as a Board of Ed, and every Board of Ed, should be advocating for their teachers and their students. And I think that's what it comes down to, that no one really feels like any Board of Ed is advocating for anyone. You know these demands coming down from the state are killing the teachers. Pushing them out, they're leaving, and no one even cares, including our unions that were paying over thousands of dollars that aren't even on our side. And it's every Board of Ed across the whole state, the unions, and the head honcho, Sean Spiller, all of them. You guys are all destroying education, and it's just very sad as an educator. It's not even education anymore. It's only about money and politics, and no one's doing anything about it. And we do know that you do know how to stand up to the state. We've all read about the lawsuit. Fighting for more money, money that's owed to you, whatever the case may be. I didn't really get too detailed into it, but there is a lawsuit with a bunch of towns, you know, against the state. And you have every right to do that. Why aren't you doing it for other reasons as well? There are things that you can do, and that's all we're asking. It was nice to hear about all of the positive data that you shared, about how well the district's doing with the low numbers. It's great. I would like to know why that you can't, as the Jackson Board of Ed, use that data and make your own informed decision for your school district starting March 7th, since there will be no executive order. I heard you saying you have to consult with Health Department in this county, this and county that. I'm not sure, was that the case before COVID? Did you need to consult with all of these people to make decisions for the school district before then? I don't know. So I'm just wondering why, after March 7th, when there's no executive order, why does there still need to be consulting with them? There's no more laws, there's no more mandates. There are only recommendations, you know, it's, it's just recommend, recommended protocol. Everything is just suggestions coming from all of the county health departments and the CDC. It's all right there, it's all recommendations. So, my question to you is, after March 7th, will you be using Jackson's data that is doing so wonderful and make decisions based on that data for Jackson?
Nicole, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mrs. Monk?
Good evening. My name is Normie Monk. I've lived in Jackson for three years. I have two children in private school. I drive them to and from school. Thank you so much for all your efforts that you are doing to help with the busing. Just a few points. Please understand that the aid in lieu is a last resort. We need our children on busing. May is much earlier than August, but buses that go through Lakewood will be bidding in March, so we might miss our chance. I know that you had a meeting with the LSTA. Has any progress been made since then? And the Jackson School District has to have a way to contact the schools to find out all the different routes, schools, and the children that will need buses. Thank you again for your time, have a good evening.
Eleanor Hannan?
Good evening, and thank you very much for giving me this time to speak. I would first like to thank the new school board members and all the other board members for your voluntary service and support to our public school children. I'm confident that you will serve our district well. I would like to also applaud the superintendent, as her professionalism and her art for articulation is well noted by the taxpayers. Your leadership is refreshing. As a public school educator, Jackson taxpayer, and graduate of Jackson Memorial with grandchildren in the elementary school system here, I embrace the education, tradition, culture that Jackson schools foster for our children. We provide very diverse opportunities that will enrich their life moving forward for the rest of their lives. It is here where they find their bonds, how to make team and connections. As you know, public school parents want what's best for their children. A strong curriculum, challenging AP courses, electives, the arts, sports, extracurriculars that give our children the tools to compete in this competitive world. I strongly promote the social and emotional intelligence that is provided and the tools that, to handle success for failure, success, and humility. I would also like to give a shout out and gratitude and respect for all those unsung heroes who give up their time to be a coach or a club advisor that teach our children how to follow the rules, even when it's inconvenient. It should be noticed that when this board approves a trip or competition, what most people do not know nor understand is that it is the parents who are paying out of their own pocket for this participation. And I say this because of commentary that was made at the last meeting. I listened online to the last, to the last month's meeting, and I'm concerned for my district as I hear a tone, one reminiscent a tone, one reminiscent of towns' years past, a tone that is weighing mandated and not mandated, a tone that broke my heart as I watched that district get gutted many years ago. This causes great concern and anxiety as a taxpayer over the well-being of my grandchildren's future and the quality education we expect. But I did hear the plight of the private school parents. I also sat at the council meeting and heard the same, but the issue was spun in a much different manner, now being presented as a safety concern. And today I read an article that both the mayor and council have approached this board and administration of the safety issues, where as we all know, that is the only door open to the superintendent's ear.
Eleanor, your time is up.
Thank you.
Raisi Herman?
Hi, my name is Raisi Herman. As the daughter of a former Board of Education member, I know how much you do to help kids. I hope you'll help me get to school on a bus next year. Thank you.
Jennifer Gallagher?
Hi, everybody. Don't worry, I'm not going to bore you tonight with my three-minute-long speech because it's very clear that that doesn't matter. What matters here is that we're just going to follow mandates. So I have a couple of questions, they're going to be really brief. If the governor issues a new mandate, August 1st for the following school year, September 2022, are you guys going to enforce masks again? And if the governor enforces a mandate, August 1st, 2022, enforcing every board member across New Jersey to cut their leg off, are you going to follow it? And in closing, I was behind my kid's bus the other day and nobody's wearing masks. But my daughter, who has an exemption, has to sit in the front of the bus away from her peers because she's such a contagion, but everybody else on the bus who just puts it on and then turns around so the bus driver can't see them, takes it off and is throwing things at each other on the bus. And doesn't matter who tells anybody about it because there's no standard for the bus drivers. It's a different bus driver, different bus every day, coming at a different time. So, thank you. Have a great night.
Leah Dembiger?
Hi, good evening. My name is Leah Dembiger. Thanks for all the work you're doing for all of us. I'm a school psychologist, a Rutgers grad, and I'm really supportive of our public schools. I think the greatest gift we can give to our community are strong public schools. I think Ms. Hannam said things like social-emotional learning are not actually extras, they're essentials. I'm also a parent of private school students and I know a lot of us [BLEEP] that can accommodate everybody but will not take proper public school students and what we need and what we are used to. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say I appreciate the fact that you have hired on Mr. Soto. That is refreshing, what he has presented tonight. But I also want to voice my concerns about what I had heard at the last meeting, and it seems like it's on the table, but I have to just say this moving forward. I really truly hope that this board does not ever consider the LSTA. The LSTA has become a bottomless pit for that district and my fear is that we'll do the same to this district. They have been part and parcel to the $125 million debt that has been incurred in that town loan that could me and every taxpayer in the state of New Jersey on the hook to pay. We are all subsidizing that. I truly believe that our district needs to maintain control of the busing and the busing routes.
So, in regards to, you saw tonight, the requirements that we have as a school district in regards to non-public transportation. What I will say is that, as I said before, programs for our students are always paramount in our decision-making. We have requirements that we have to follow, as Ms. Richardson went through them, based on state regulations. Last year and earlier this year, in regards to budget and our S2 cuts, I actually did advocate at a state board meeting that we needed to do something different in regards to transportation concerns in Jackson, and I also brought up other surrounding towns, that the state, I was asking the state to look at something different so that we all feel supported in regards to funding. I will say I have since again reached out to the state level and am hopeful for a meeting to express those same concerns. I do want to see every community member and their needs met, but I also understand that this can become a fiscal burden to our district and we don't want to see that happen either. And we're trying to follow all of the requirements. As you know, we get monitored and that's important, that we are following all of the requirements and still trying to meet the needs of our community members. So there is some advocacy going on in regards to the question about the mayor. I know that, no, the mayor does not have a say in what happens in regards to public school or non-public school transportation, but I will say, he did call me, he did ask me to meet with the LSTA. Apparently the LSTA presented to some township members as well. And as I have said always, I will always listen to anyone. So we have listened to the LSTA and we have also listened to other organizations like MoESK, Monmouth and Ocean County Ed Service Commission. We've done our research, we've listened, and we continue to listen. But again, as you saw this evening, what we need to do moving forward is to go out to bid for bus companies at this moment in time. One of the things that I do want to make the public aware of in regards to transportation and funding for non-public, and Ms. Richardson, feel free to jump in at any time, or Mr. Soto, is that we, in regards to non-public, the state does fund us back $290 for every non-public student in regards to if we've bused them or if we've paid aid and loo. What we've learned through listening and investigating is that if the district was to move with the LSTA, which is a private company now, it is no longer funded by the state, there was a pilot that happened in Lakewood for three years, the state, but we do not get that $290 back. So obviously that's not fiscally responsible for this district to make that decision. But again, we continue to advocate at the state level to say we really do need a better plan here so that all needs can be met, public and non-public. So we'll continue to keep you updated as we do that. Okay? In regards to our B-8 forms and your suggestion, we'll take that into consideration for sure. We've tried to be responsive and address timelines where we can, we'll continue to do that. And in regards to strengthening our transportation department, I think we've demonstrated over the last few meetings and particularly this meeting, that we certainly have been working on that for months now. And again, our transportation department and our drivers and everybody in it have been working double time to do that and I do appreciate all that work. In regards to the question about our low COVID numbers and making decisions, I believe what, again, to reiterate what we said this evening, we are currently looking at our numbers and making decisions based on that. We are reading health guidelines as well, but we are going to move forward with not quarantining healthy asymptomatic kids at this point. So we will continue to try to make the best decisions based on our district data, but we do confer with our health department and we have done that before COVID as well with certain health situations. But again, we're trying to make the best decisions based on our district data right now. And I think I've answered most of them and now I will address two others. Mr. Gallagher, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth exchange again. I've been nothing but respectful, I've been nothing but listening. It's not returned, there's name-calling, smearing, and spreading mistruths, quite frankly. And I know you will disagree with me, but I do need to publicly say that that is not what happened. Our security guards asked you to please settle down, our security guards asked you to please stop interrupting a public meeting, and that continued. So we did ask you to please leave so we could continue our meeting. There is nothing in regards to any physical assault that was made. We are trying to run a public meeting here with respect for our community and unfortunately, it's the last meeting, that didn't happen. In regards to the attorney who sits to the right of me, this attorney is a board attorney hired by the board to help ensure that we are following all of our laws and mandates and code. As you can imagine, there are many, many rules, regulations, and codes that the board needs to follow. Our attorney does an excellent job at that and helps to advise us and help maintain control at our board meetings as well. That is the job that Mr. Zinnimer is hired for. And there is no personal pay that I make to him. In fact, it's the board that hires the attorney. And he is a stellar attorney and I am disappointed that people feel that they need to target people to make a point instead of making their point respectfully. With that, I close public comment.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the board? Okay, start down there.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight as always and speaking, your opinions, your thoughts, comments, we do appreciate them, we do listen, we do talk about them and, you know, we try to take everything into consideration. I want to thank all of the proposed budget presentations because I know they took a lot of time and there was a lot of information. So with that, just, I wish everybody a good night. Thank you.
I as well would like to thank everybody for coming out, thank you for your comments. We hear them, even the colorful ones, we do hear those as well, we take note. We're here to serve you and we're all doing the best we can. I think we're doing a damn good job. And if you look at some of the stuff back here and you kind of take away some of the other stuff that I know it's important to some, we're doing it, we're getting it done. And we're really sacrificing a lot of our time because we care about all 8,000 kids in this district and their parents, and we love your comments. We want to keep hearing them because it'll help us adjust and pivot to where the town is going because we want to hear you. So thank you. I hope you realize that with some of the things Ms. Promili said with making masks optional, I know that was a big topic for a long time, and then the quarantining, you know, and moving away from quarantining healthy kids because our kids need to be in school. And we've advocated for that, Ms. Promili, and staff has now studied the data and that's happening, and a lot of other good things other than masks and quarantining are happening. Look at the curriculum, look at the money we're now investing, we're able to invest in your children's education and mine, because I got three in the district. So thank you for your comments, get home safe, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
As always, thank you to everyone for coming out. I really, you know, we do listen to the comments. As I said before, bring things to the table, give us time to work on it, we try to work as quickly as possible. And I've said before, yes, we are new, but we are learning on the spot, again, as quickly as possible. I also want to thank our high school students for coming out, I always enjoy the updates. And Tina and I are really looking forward to seeing The Little Mermaid coming up and Big Fish. So if anyone else, I hope everyone else, you know, takes the time to maybe get some tickets and enjoy our shows, our high schools put on some really great productions. So again, thanks for coming out and thank you to everyone that's watching at home. Good night.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. I know some of the speakers who spoke tonight and I know some of them do not like public speaking, so thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. It's really, really important that the board hears what you have to say. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Soto, you're doing a really good job in a really messy department, right, that you're trying to clean up and it's definitely noted, you know, we've had meetings with him, he's an impressive person. It's encouraging to see some of the changes that we're making and some of the changes that you made with the website for the private school, because these are things that we can do that stay in the law and, you know, follow procedure. And I think as a board, that's something we have to remember, that we feel for you, we have empathy for anyone, you know, we're all parents, well, you know, we're all parents up here, I have multiple kids, I work full-time. Getting my kids from point A to point B throughout the day is super, super challenging and my heart goes out to you. However, some of these, you know, you are making personal family choices. So as a board, I think we just need to remember what our role is, which is to make sure that we're using taxpayer money wisely, that we're following, you know, laws and procedures, that we are trying to keep our public schools as strong as possible so that our kids who are in the public schools can compete when they graduate. This is really important, it's hard work, a lot of these things are going to take time, we need to cooperate with each other, we need to make sure that we're not making an environment where it's us versus them or them versus us. But everybody kind of has to hear each other out and as a board, I encourage us to remember what our role is, use taxpayer money smart, create really strong schools, listen to everyone, stay within the laws and follow procedure.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening, your input and the presentations. Congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year and educational support staff. Thank you to Ms. Promili, the staff, the board members, and attorney for all your professionalism and dedication. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate the Jackson Memorial Girls Bowling Team for winning their division and the state championship, the Jackson Memorial Boys Bowling Team for winning their division, the Shore Conference Tournament and a state championship, and the Jackson Memorial Girls Wrestling Team for winning the Shore Conference Tournament. I would also like to close by saying, congratulations to Mrs. McKeon, she's done a great job over there at Switlick, my kids went through there many years ago, okay, one's a senior in college now, okay, but she has affected students that she doesn't even know. Thank you, have a good night. Motion to close by acclamation.
Second.
Aye. Doesn't say it here, though. Let's say along the favor.